Good evening, call to order this May twentieth, twenty twenty five Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Special Meeting. Start with our meeting minutes from May sixth and May eighth. Have a motion on the items, please. Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Harrison, move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second Commissioner Corcello. Commissioner Collins is sitting in. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Harrison?
No, none, thank you, I feel good.
Corcello. Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
So five hands here. Passes unanimously. New application for recommendation to public hearing. Design Resident District Regulation Amendment, application of Attorney Chris Russo on behalf of R R I T L L C. Amendment, section ten of the zoning regulations regarding the design residence district. Section ten point six, density and minimum lot area, section ten point ten setbacks. Section ten twelve covered bulk, section sixteen. Streets and roadways and section twenty eight point six point one off street parking. Ms. Harrison, Ms. Harrigan, excuse me, anything to add besides public hearing is required?
No, because public hearing is required.
May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Corcello.
Move to recommend a public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Harrison seconds. Anything further? Commissioner Harrison, anything further?
Nothing further.
Questions or comments from the commission? Public hearings require, this is only a recommendation for a future hearing. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. And I see hands remotely from Commissioner Braun and Harrison, so it passes unanimously. To the extent anybody's here on this item, this will be scheduled for a future public hearing. It's not going to be heard tonight. Old Business thirteen twenty Kings Highway Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan Application of thirteen twenty eight H C Associates LLC. For a new one way commercial building in the Design Commercial District. Ms. Harrigan.
Thank you. Thirteen twenty Kings Highway. The thirty eight thousand eight hundred seventy five square feet subject site. Located on the one way portion of Kings Highway Route One in the Design Commercial District. D C D adjacent to the Post Road Circle. Presently contains a bank with a drive up. This is directly across the street from several drive through uses, including the McDonald's and Donut Inn, which are only permitted in the D C D zone. The proposal includes a five thousand square foot building with a one lane drive through use. Of twenty four hundred square feet and two takeout locations. Thirteen hundred square feet each with forty five surface parking spaces. A bypass lane is provided for circulation around the drive through lane for the other proposed businesses. And the drive through lane meets the one hundred foot stacking length and ten foot width requirement. The proposal reduces the existing curb cuts from two locations. To one located at the far west of the property. As a state road, the Connecticut D O T will need to provide final approval for this driveway location. The site plan includes a pedestrian path of travel from the public sidewalk. To a walkway that provides safe access to each of the proposed business entries. The landscaping plan protects some existing areas in the rear corner of the property. With four additional shade trees and additional landscaping provided throughout the proposed parking area. Although the site is located within the coastal boundary, there are no coastal resources located onsite. Or in close proximity. However, the site is located in the A E ten flood zone. Where the town requires floodproofing to elevation eleven. The D E P Coastal Planner requests a condition that a soil erosion and sediment. Soil erosions and sedimentation controls. Be installed prior to the start of construction and maintained for the duration of the project. Based on comments from D E P N F I P State Coordinator. Staff recommends as a condition of approval that a drive drive proofing engineering certificate. And a floodproofing emergency action and maintenance plan. Be required prior to the issuance of certificate certificate of occupancy. The project includes installation of a storm water treatment system where none presently exists. There was no public comment received on this item. The considerations for the special permit are found in section twenty five point seven point seven. Is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character? As to harmonize with the neighborhood. To accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character. To protect property values in the neighborhood. To preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community and to avoid undue traffic congestion. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Peter, do you want to speed up this?
Yes.
Review the tapes. You reviewed the tape?
Yes.
May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Corcello.
Move to approve with the recommendations of D E P and staff incorporated as conditions.
Commissioner Levy seconds. Go ahead.
I think the the application meets the special permit requirements and this this is a permitted use. And given that it satisfies those requirements, I I think the commission has an obligation to approve it. I will say, I I would have preferred to see something else in the spot and and so it just as an aside, I think. This underscores really the need for us to complete and adopt the P O C D. So we can get to making some of the implementing some of the recommendations that are in there. You know, this is really. A use that prioritizes cars a little bit more than than I I would certainly like to see. On this stretch of road. But again, when we have. Regulations in place, that's what we have to follow. And so so again, I think this is just a perfect example of why. We really need to. Get to the end of that process on the P O C D and. Start seeing some more applications for for uses that are more pedestrian oriented, mixed use. You know, like we're seeing on other parts of Post Road. But again, it meets the conditions for special permit approval and so that's that's the obligation here.
Commissioner Levy's got second.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, again, it meets our conditions. While I share Commissioner Corcello's. You know, desire for more pedestrian friendly development, knowing this area well, having had an office there for twenty five years behind. It's not exactly a great walking area and nor is it likely to be. It's right off the circle and. I think at the moment, the proposed use is far better than the abandoned bank buildings. So based upon that, I think it should be approved.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I will.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. This is a permitted use, so this is, you know, should be approved by this commission. I I think it's a fine development. I don't think anything really walkable would be safe here or appropriate. And I would just note that and certainly the Vice Chairman Corcello would know this as an officer of this commission, that we are on task to be passing the P O C D. I think that our chairman put out a timeline when we last spoke about it. This is a reoccurring theme I'm seeing. We are going to be passing it soon. We did have some. Some sidelines due to COVID, due to a variety of reasons. We're meeting every week since, I think, September. So I think our our commission is doing our work and we will be passing the P O C D. I look forward to more comments on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Randolph. This this use test comply with our regulations. And is is a significant improvement over what's there. We did get significant feedback from the neighbors on. Previous applications, this area was dangerous, unwalkable. So I think rather than surrendering. The fact of surrendering this to cars. And I'm reassured, and I didn't know we had a timeline for the P O C D, I'm reassured to hear that that.
Yeah, they mentioned that in the March meeting, Jeff, the the timeline.
Commissioner Randolph's time.
Oh, sorry.
I I'm glad to hear we have a recommendation, but this this is a underutilization of of the area and. But it is, it is an improvement over what's there and I'm reassured to hear that we're proceeding on the P O C D because it does underscore. I'm glad Commissioner Corcello. Mentioned this and Commissioner Harrison is is supporting this. We do need to. Have better planning and not just reactive planning, which is what we've seen. Doing for quite some time, but it is definitely an improvement and I appreciate the use and the.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do you want to just re- do you want to just reiterate the P O C D timeline, just so everyone is aligned on that? I I feel like it's been coming up a lot.
Not really.
I mean, I just want to reaffirm that I I think you did mention in March, I believe, that we would be passing it by election day, if not sooner. So I just want to make sure that's reaffirmed to this commission.
What's the thought? I mean, I think there's some outstanding item, action items from the. From commission members. I don't know if that's been done yet. I'll reach out to Ms. Harrigan tomorrow to see if that's been done.
Thank you.
But I my, I didn't want to get into it. My plan is to, unless Ms. Harrigan has already done so, we'll schedule a public hearing. At the very least, August or September, at our earliest convenience to get this on the calendar. We will have a draft ready for the public to review. At least, I would think, two months before would make sense. And wherever we are at that point is where we are, and then we'll go to a public hearing.
I can tell you that I will be meeting Ms. Harrigan on Friday with. Some of the items that I would like to modify in the draft.
Good. All right, back on topic.
Chairman, I'm not voting on this matter right before us now. I didn't, I wasn't able to get caught up.
Okay, so you are recusing then, I guess? Staying, recusing, whichever.
Standing, I guess, yeah.
Any comments? Anything further? Can we put this to a vote? Very straightforward application, I thought, that met our conditions. So, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I have six and one abstention from Commissioner Braun. Passes, as I indicated. One seventy six Linwood Avenue, special exception, application of one eighty five stag associates pertaining to an expansion of an auto sales and service facilities. Take care. Into an adjacent existing building. Design Industrial District.
One seventy six Linwood Avenue is the Honda of Westport. Located at one eighty six. Honda of Westport located at one eighty six Linwood Avenue in the Design Industrial District. Seeks to expand its service operations into an adjacent one story. Ninety two hundred square foot building located at one seventy six Linwood Avenue. That was formerly formerly occupied by Ole Sports. The proposal adds eight new service lifts and an accessory car wash area. As part of their service activity within the expanded space. With new circulation through the building to two six, two. Two, six new marked parking spaces. In the paved area to the rear of the site. No building additions or other significant site changes are requested. A request was made to provide some offsite shade trees to be provided in lieu. Of the provision of onsite shade trees to which the property owner has consented. The tree warden recommends that this be accomplished through gifting some trees. Through the commemorative tree program that is available on the tree warden's website. Staff requests a condition that a consolidation map be filed prior to issuance of a building permit. There was no public comment received on this item. The relevant standard considerations for a special exception are as follows. Is the location type, character and size? Of the use and buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate. And orderly development of the town and neighborhood. And not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property or impair its value. Two, is the nature and location of the use and buildings or structures? Shall be such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three, are the streets serving the proposed use adequate? To carry prospective traffic with provision made for entering and leaving. The property without creating undue hazard to traffic. Or congestion? And has adequate provision been made for off street parking? Four, is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation and development? That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Randolph?
I I propose we. Pass the special exception.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
There are second. Commissioner Braun, second. Do you second?
I second, yes.
I just want, it's harder when we're remote. Which is fine, Commissioner Randolph, go ahead.
Sure. This this use is consistent with the with the area, the location type, character and size. Is consistent with the industrial area and the adjoining uses despite the fact that it was a soccer training facility. There are other automotive uses in the area. The building structure is. Has adequate fire protection and the streets serving the proposed are adequate to carry perspective traffic. So I propose that we we.
I'm sorry, I should have, there were some conditions of approval.
Yep.
Staff recommended, right, Commissioner, Ms. Harrigan?
Yes.
Subject to the conditions.
Can we amend that motion then for the subject to the conditions stated by staff?
I was about to state that.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Commissioner Braun, is that okay? As the second, we include the conditions as stated by staff?
Well, is, one condition is that a consolidation map be filed prior to the issuance of building. The other condition? To require the gifting of the trees to the tree warden through the commemorative tree program. Is that a condition or a recommendation? I think it should be a condition, but.
Recommendation.
I think it, I think it's not a recommendation.
I'd like to make it a condition. They've already agreed anyway, but I'd rather have it be a firm thing.
I know, but you said motion to approve without the stuff. So I mean, let's, if if we don't have an agreement on you. Then we're not, we're not going to afford. And then we'll make motions to amend and stuff like that, so. Commissioner Braun, go ahead. If you had other comments.
I'll go with what Jeff, with Commissioner Randolph said. I I believe. Is the appropriate place, Design Industrial District. This is exactly what we want to be doing. To help our commercial businesses to conduct their business in the best way possible. It's in the right location. It's in harmony with the neighboring area. It's not adding to impervious surface or flooding. It's not adding. To traffic. It's got adequate parking. And it's in compliance with the P O C D, so I I totally support it.
Other comments or questions, other comments from the commission? I guess, especially now that we have a. Thoughts on the donation of trees, whether it's a condition or a recommendation of approval?
I suggest that that's a recommendation, because they voluntarily complied with that.
They're good citizens, I'm sure they'll follow through.
So are you okay with a recommendation or a condition of approval? Okay. Again, thoughts, recommendation or condition, or just in general, the application?
I would like to have it as a condition.
I'm sure we can require it. No, we can't, yeah. So I think, you know, they they volunteered it, I think.
Well, they voluntarily consented to it. I mean, Commissioner Randolph had asked for it, they consented to it. I don't know what, I mean, we can make it a condition if they challenge it, but I just seems like the better. Course of action is. Note that we don't have that authority and to make it a recommendation, but. I I don't think it's going to end up mattering at the end.
Well, if we don't have the authority, then it's kind of moot, then. It's, so they offered, Jeff recommended it and they offered it.
They accepted it.
We don't have the authority to make it a condition.
I don't know what authority we have for it. I mean, to make them for donate, have it done on the property themselves, which would be the subject, the anchor, so to speak. But then to require it to be done elsewhere.
I see.
Not the ordinances.
I agree. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I mean, the application relates to a particular parcel, so I would question whether we have authority to. Pose that they have trees elsewhere in town. And it even lacks specificity since there's been no real discussion and it's, we're leaving it to the tree warden as to the numbers. And so forth, so I think we're fit to start leaving the recommendation.
Commissioner Braun, you still believe this should be a condition of approval?
It's, they've accepted it, I believe they will follow through. I'm okay. With recommendation.
We amend the motion then. Commissioner Randolph has said he will do so. Commissioner. Wrong, can we amend the motion to staff recommend, staff comments or conditions of approval with the trees being a recommendation of approval?
Yes. I I agree with that.
Okay. Anything further? Or can we put this to a vote? Really straightforward, again. Everybody understand the motion on table, motion to approve with staff. Conditions of approval and the the donation of trees being a recommendation of approval?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Five, six. Thank you. Passes unanimously. All right, I don't see Attorney Russo. Well, why don't we get to skip him, I guess. We'll call out of order in our public hearing. Twenty one seventy nine, twenty one ninety nine Post Road, twenty nine Fairfield Place. Zoning Compliance and Coastal Site Plan Application of Sunshine Development LLC pertaining to a sixty unit. Presidential Development pursuant to A. Section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. In the Design Commercial District. So Attorney Fallon. We ended up. We had. Ended public comment subject to the submission of experts. Letters from the experts or reports from the experts from Attorney Green. Saw those. Got them in on Thursday.
On Friday.
Friday.
Friday afternoon.
And you had a chance to respond and.
I did so yesterday.
As well. So that ends public comment portion. It had already been ended, I guess, at that point.
That was my understanding, yes. I mean, I I I respect the commission's normal diligence. There's a lot to review there in their reports and ours, but we did try to keep it definitely responsive. Point by point to Mr. Green's questions and the consultants, so. With the timeframe that we're under. I, you know, that's, that would be my suggestion.
I guess the next point is, I, as, unless somebody tells me otherwise, my understanding is with the with the reports being submitted, public comment's over. And it's your time for rebuttal. You have your reports in there. Attorney Green looks questioning at me like I'm saying something wrong. Attorney Green, come on up. I thought I was.
From attorney.
Yes.
Oh, we are. Before the rebuttal or, right, okay, thank you.
I thought, so Attorney Green, you're looking at me like I I said something wrong. Like, what, what, what am I? What is your understanding of where we are with this?
My experts were not available last Tuesday, as I understand it. We had submitted our reports by Friday as requested and as I understood it. Our experts would be able to present this evening.
That was not my understanding.
My understanding.
My understanding was that. My understanding was that. Because of the timeframe we're under, because the hearing had been noticed, because we understood Mr. Green's experts couldn't be here. We all agreed that we would be submitting extensive reports in writing by certain deadlines. Mr. Green meant his, I meant mine. And I would suggest that the record here is totally complete and I personally. Especially in light of the time posture of this application. See no reason why we have to have Mr. Trinkus and Mr. Monta, I'm sorry. Monte Leone basically regurgitate what's been submitted to this commission in writing and it's going to be diligently reviewed. And because if that happens. Then I'm, I'm going to have to have my consultants come up and, you know. Here's ten o'clock, looking in the face.
First of all, you and I just spoke and you indicated, you asked me if I was going to rein in Mr. Trinkus.
Yes.
Because you said he could go for an hour and a half.
Because that was the first that I knew. That you intended to call him, so how could?
I mean, was that the understanding was public comment was done? I'm sorry, I didn't review last meeting, but I thought it was pretty clear that. We have a timeframe here. I was not expecting to have. Entire public comments. Opened for at least your opposition and then his full rebuttal. And then we'd be voting on this tonight. I thought that I'd given you what I thought was the urgency of. I gotta have this decision in by Saturday, this Saturday now. You know, this thing was noticed last week and.
As I understood it, public comment was closed except for me to present by experts.
No, public comment was closed subject to the reports. Not to present. What if, what else do they have to present other than that it's in the reports?
Chairman, can I, can we make a comment?
Yeah.
They can answer questions by the commission.
We, we cannot read detailed technical reports. We need presentations. If all the experts are here, we have three hours. I'd like to hear from the experts.
That's not what I said. And I thought that's not what I agreed to earlier. I mean.
That's what I thought we agreed to.
That's what I thought too.
Of course. It goes down lines like that. I don't know. Can we vote on it?
I think it's a decision the commission. And discretion can make. One way or the other.
I think this could put the commission in a, like, I don't know what our decision will be on this, but this could be an appealable. Aspect. I'm not a lawyer, but I think we should let the experts speak. That was my understanding when we last had our meeting last week.
I disagree with that wholeheartedly. Attorney Russo, come on up. I want time to think. You're going to go. You have that, is that record up, I choose? We have that posting up.
Good, the video, yes.
You ready for Amina? All right. Chair Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzi LLC Offices at ten Saskatoon Hill Road. In Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant. For the construction of a new single family dwelling. Within the coastal area. There's also included with this, as you probably saw on the call, that for a rooftop deck. Which under your regulations requires special permit approval. So, to show you plans. This is a house located on Old DM Road. It's near the end of the western side of Old DM Road. It's a, I've gone by this house. I can't tell you how many times on Pine Creek. As you could see here. Pine Creek. Is located on its southern end, so you know Fairfield Beach Road is on the other side of Pine Creek. And there is a large property you might be familiar with that's at the very, very end of Old DM Road. That's to the west of us. And then we have another single family house that's to the east of us. There was an existing home on this. It was a, it was a two bedroom dwelling. It also had a detached garage that was on the other side of Old DM Road. So with this proposal was, we are knocking down. Garage. And the the dwelling that was there and proposing a new FEMA compliant dwelling. And with, again, as I, as I mentioned, a rooftop deck. One of the nice things is. Particularly with regards to the rooftop deck, and I'll show you in the plans, but you can see here well on the. On the site plan is. And I have an aerial too, so you can can kind of visually see this from on top. What ends up being the closest house to. Our proposed house is actually closer to Pine Creek than us. So we're set back a little bit. As you can see here, our box here, we're set back a little bit from that. From that next door house. And then our rooftop deck that we're proposing is set back even further from that. It's about sixteen feet to right here, I think it's like fourteen feet to to this section right here. And I'll I'll show you the architectural so you can see it. And then what you'll see on the aerial that I have, the satellite shot, which is right here, so I'll just flip over to it. Is this house that's at the end of Old DM Road is significantly set back. From our side property line that we share with them. So. You can kind of see it here how they're stepped like that, so. We're stepped back from this house, but then we have a really good buffer. To this property as well. And that property, if you've seen it since it's been constructed, it's it's very oriented towards the west because it gives them a good shot. To look down for sunsets and and all the sound. So just to show you. The plans. This is the garage level. Two car garage. The other thing I'll note too, because it was, you might have seen there was comments submitted by deep today. It was that today at three ten that they came, they came in. There are breakaway walls proposed here, so to to, you know. Um, there are breakaway walls proposed here, so to, to, you know, verify it is viewed, there are breakaway walls proposed. This gives access to the upper living floor like you see at mo, on most, you know, beach properties. Uh, and there's an elevator as well. Um, here's the first main living floor, which is an open uh, concept uh, living floor. Um, with kitchen, dining and living, uh, and then there's a deck off the back. This is the second main uh, living floor, you can see the bedrooms here, baths, and then a smaller um, upper floor. Uh, which has an office, uh, and just kind of an open area. The final plan I'll show you, the floor plans, is the rooftop deck, so again, what you could see here is now, in talking with them online, and I guess this would be a con, a condition of approval. Uh, originally we thought the fact that the stairwell was enclosed was okay, um, but that actually has to be open. So we would, as a condition of approval, accept that being converted to an, to an open stairwell. Um, but then what you see here is a rooftop deck, um, and again, so over on this side. It's sixteen feet setback from the front, so it's not like hanging over, cause I know a neighbor submitted a comment, worry about it kind of looming over into their yard, so we have the setback from the house, but then we also have sixteen feet, which is from really the main portion of this deck. Um, uh, you know, the, the setback, so we, we're not just hanging over and looming over into the yard. Uh, we had wanted the stairwell to provide some privacy to that neighbor, so we were talking about it before the meeting because it would be open. Another thing that we would i- in, in lieu of that, instead of something enclosed. Uh, you've probably seen them, they're, they're like, they're almost like fences on tops of roofs, they're like, they're like a, it's just like a solid wood screen that can be used. That basically would block this neighbor who's our closest neighbor from seeing into the rooftop deck. So we'd be willing to, to put that in to give her um, some screening because the stairwell uh, no longer would be uh, enclosed. Um, we'd be happy to do that, to, to give them some screen, but as you can see, the main part of the roof deck is really oriented uh, towards the western side and the other side. These are just some elevations. Um, this is looking from Old DM Road. Uh, you can see the rooftop deck up there. Uh, again, on this side, now this shows the enclosed stairwell, this would be opened up. Um, this is looking from that neighbor on the west. This is looking from uh, Pine Creek. Back at the house, and then uh, this would be from that nearest residential neighbor, and again, we could put up here is a, a a privacy screen, so they don't um, they don't just see open deck area there in lieu of uh, the stairwell. More plans. What I could show you too, which I'm sure y'all notice if you, if you put it down to the beach, rooftop decks have um, common uh, in the beach area, um, these are just some pictures of the site. So this is looking up here is looking from uh, Old DM Road. This is the site, it's been cleared, um, there's, as you can see, there's almost like a berm that when you get over to Pine Creek, that really kind of contains things this way, away from Pine Creek. Uh, and then over here, the structure you see here is actually on Fairfield Beach Road. Uh, that's uh, Mr. Martin's property across the uh, across Pine Creek. This is the neighbor to the west. Um, again, as you could see, setback from uh, from our property line. Here is the lot cleared, um, and you can see that house that's over here. Uh, neighbor also wanted us to preserve a tree that you could see here, um, we're, we're, we're um, gonna save, uh, save that tree. Um, and then here, I just showed you, this was looking back on Old DM Road, what you could see is on the other side, kind of diagonal from us. There's a, there's a house that has a rooftop deck, and then the next couple of pictures, I just show you. Um. Other examples of rooftop decks that you could find on Old DM Road, Pine Creek Avenue, French Street, Fairfield Beach Road. Uh, this is on Fairfield Beach Road, um, Old DM Road, Pine Creek Avenue. Um, these are the condos at College Place, they have rooftop decks. Um, so uh, there's a number of different types of rooftop decks. And then there's others that, you know, we've seen that where people are trying to kind of work into the roof lines that um, kind of come out funny, but really, there's plenty of rooftop decks that have been approved uh, throughout the beach district, and this would, this would be in conformity um, with those that have been approved. Regarding. So, um. And just so you know, there was a, there was a comment from that, the, the neighbor who had sent regarding trees, and I just wanted to provide a clarification on that. So there were some pines, she talked about the removal of pine trees, it was, it's confusing because uh, it made it seem like it was between this property and three-three-five, it was actually opposite her property. Um, these trees uh, were clear, they were overgrown, um, and so they were cleared. But the one tree that was closest to her, um, that's the one we're proposing to leave. Um, it's nice because it also acts as kind of a natural screen, um, with our house setback from it. Regarding uh, coastal area management. Um, our, our expert submitted CAM application, she found there's a small decrease in impervious area, there's a little removal of vegetation. Um. The area of the title buffer um, will increase because it's actually in the back, so the garage that was removed, that actually increases the title buffer. Um, there's no increase in stormwater runoff, and the new FEMA, a new dwelling is uh, FEMA compliant. So with that, she found that there would be no impact on coastal resources. Uh, regarding the deep comments, again, this came in late this afternoon. Um, there was a comment about increasing residential density. Cause the former house was a two-bedroom, single-family, and this is a three-bedroom, single-family. I have to say, I, I submitted a number of coastal site plans, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen the comment like, uh, like that, um. I've gotten that comment for subdivisions where you're thinking a lot and you're making it from one into two or into three. But I've, I've never seen it for increasing the number of bedrooms on a property. Um, and it, it, it doesn't make sense in the, in the section that she references, I, to, to me, it, it doesn't correlate because it doesn't make sense because if I have an existing two-bedroom house and I just add a bedroom uh, under your regulations, build a small addition and put a bedroom in it, I'm exempted from CAM under the regulations. So you need CAM when you construct a new house, but it doesn't make sense that you have a non FEMA compliant dwelling. And you can add a bedroom with no coastal site plan, but then you build a FEMA compliant house with the same number of bedrooms, and that's against policy, so. Uh, I had always, when I had received that particular comment, it has always been from when you increase the number of units in the coastal area, not from when you have what's a small change to a building, which is increasing uh, the number of uh, bedrooms. Um, and the section she actually stated is with regards to uh, in the statute saying that uh, the Coastal Management Act, the aim is to minimize hazards to life and property. And one of the big benefits I think we're doing here is we're converting this what was a, a lot that had a non FEMA compliant dwelling and co, and, and converting it to a FEMA compliant dwelling. Um, which I think is, is certainly better uh, to surrounding life and property. Um, I have no issue, she asked for site monitoring as a condition uh, during construction, no issue with that, um, as a condition. Um, there was also some clarification questions she asked. Um, one being was the lowest horizontal uh, member above the, the fourteen-foot flooded elevation, that's noted on the site plan, it is. Um, and uh, again, that the walls, they are going to be breakaway walls. Uh, and there was a question about the elevator and whether it was, was uh, designed in accordance with the FEMA regulation and, and it is um, proposed uh, to, to be built in accordance to that. So with that, uh, again, our, our expert found that there'd be no adverse impact on coastal resources, and we believe this rooftop deck is in character with what you see in the beach district. Uh, and designed in such a way um, that it minimizes its intrusion on our closest uh, neighbor. And again, is more oriented uh, to our western side um, away from them. Uh, and uh, and, and that's essentially it, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Corcello, then Braun.
Um, regarding uh, the DEP comments, a couple of things, I think, first of all. Uh, it does, my reading is not that uh, their concern was that uh, this application increases it by one bedroom, there, what they seem to be suggesting is that it's essentially increasing it by two bedrooms because the, on the space meets, really meets the definition of a bedroom. Um, but, but beyond that, uh, can you just address the uh, paragraph where uh, they say the application doesn't include enough detail to confirm FEMA compliance?
Yeah, so that's, a- again, so that is, um, with regards to the second question, then I'll go back to the first question, so. That paragraph is regarding uh, the fourteen-foot standard for the lowest horizontal structure member, and on the site plan, that's noted at being at fourteen-point-eight feet, so we are, um, we are above that. Uh, and then then, then the breakaway walls is the next paragraph, so yes, we do have breakaway walls. Um, proposed, I'm happy to have that as a condition of approval, um, just to affirm it, but um, but we do have breakaway walls, uh, and then the next paragraph is the elevator one, and so we are, it's FEMA technical bulletin four. Uh, and constructing it in accordance with that. Uh, I think that's it, I don't know if.
We've mentioned, can you add the floor elevations then to the plans, because I think that was one specific.
To the, yeah, yes, to the, um, we could add that to the architectural plans, yes, uh, for the, for the building permit plans, we could definitely add that. It's, it's listed on the site plan, I, we've already made the change, we, we have the construction plans. So I think it's, it's listed on the uh, construction plans that I could submit in for the record. Yeah, you want me to submit it in for the record?
Yeah, they're, they're not legible over there.
I think.
Let me get this off first.
It should have been noted on the original ones that were submitted in, construction level plans tend to be more detailed, so, but it should have been, until that was on there, but it's on, it's also on the site plan. As far as the first floor elevation. And then, sorry, so, so, and I, and I understand she, she made the comment about the office too. Um. Again, under your current regulations.
You're safe.
Under your current regulations, you could add. If you, if you made in addition to your existing house, you would be exempted from uh, coastal site plan review, and you could add there's really no limit, I mean, besides, you know, of the physical space, you can add one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms. Um, and somebody could say it's an office.
At that point.
Sorry?
You'd meet the fifty percent rule.
Well, it, it would depend on the fifty percent, but, but what I'm saying is, is that, um, if you didn't cross the fifty percent of uh, value, that would require you to go up to fif, uh, to FEMA compliance. Um, there's no bedroom cap, so I, I have never seen that section be applied for limiting growth in bed. I've just seen that comment made when you're increasing, like literally increasing density, meaning turning it in from a one unit to a two unit or a three unit. Uh, when we did the subdivision on Sasko Hill Road, I believe that comment was submitted. Um, and uh, and other subdivisions I've done in the coastal area. Uh, but I don't, I, I personally, I, when I, my reading of the Coastal Management Act in that section, I, I, I don't see how it extends to.
Commissioner Harrigan, any thoughts on this, is this something we can discuss later or what?
Yeah, so, so what I will say is the DEP is increasingly becoming more cautious in their language. Um, I think that it is um, indicative of concerns about sea level rise for the state and what that means in terms of approvals for new construction. Um, the town is not exempt from that scrutiny. Uh, we have several of the um, Navy properties on Quincy Road that's going to be coming before you soon. Where those are tear downs of non-flood compliant, single families to, to, we hope, ownership units that are constructed like the Greenfield Street projects, where we desperately need affordable housing. Um, we're getting a little bit of pushback from DEP as well. So I think that they are cognizant of this balance between our extraordinary affordable housing need within the state of Connecticut, but also mindful that we are a state that is going to be deeply impacted by rising sea levels, so they're trying to balance that. Um, keeping in mind that DEP, you know, they are very cognizant of all of the impacts to our shoreline for sea level rise, I think it's within their purview to make those comments. As advisory in nature, at the end of the day, you as the commission have to determine what the greater need is.
That was my next question, was the import of it, so, okay, more advisory for our consideration, okay.
Yeah, and I'm sure I could, I, you know, a- again, if I had time before receiving the comments, I'm sure I could find new construction dwellings in the beach district that increase the number of bedrooms from what was there prior, I mean, I, I could speak from personal experience, because my, my parents are in the beach district, and they added two bedrooms to their house. Uh, post Sandy, um, and they weren't required to have coastal site.
There may be somewhat of a shift then from five years ago to now is what Ms. Harrigan is suggesting, but that's something we can discuss. Um.
And I think, you know.
I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with you though, after the, I assume you want to close the public hearing tonight. If there's something public that's already out there, I mean, I guess, uh, I don't want to open the record up, I guess, so never mind. Um.
And I think when you look at the structure, I mean, particularly, because I know this commission knows some of the houses that have been built in this beach district area, and you look at the size of the structure, it is not a you know, in comparison to the new construction dwellings that have uh, uh, been built in the uh, beach district, I it's, uh, to me, smaller than a lot of the things I've seen built there. Square footage wise.
And, and if I could make uh, one more comment, again, I'll let you hear again, um, Lady Director for the record. Um. For this application, it's really the coastal site plan review, the special permit for the roof deck. This will get another review for, by our staff, by our zoning enforcement staff for all of those very specific floodplain requirement items, as well as the building department when they get their building permit. So, um, I don't know that, even if there's a slight revision that has to be made. Um, it's really just, is this affecting the adjacent coastal resources? Are you as the commission fulfilling your requirement to make sure that those are protected? Uh, and then also the special permit review for the roof deck.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner, oh yeah, Commissioner Braun, sorry, or did you?
So I, where the inland wetlands are and where the tidal.
Title wetlands.
Can you show it around the map, it's hard for me to see, but I have an aerial right in front of me, like, are they to the west?
If you look, if you look at, do you have the site, site plan?
Photo that I'm looking at, like, there's the ha, the big house, that's kind of like to the southwest, and then there's.
So if you actually look northwest, it's in the back of the property is the tidal marsh. Um. Okay, yeah, there you go, so if you look at the site plan, on the back end of the site plan, it says tidal wetlands, the blue line. A little bit to the left, there, like, that, that's the tidal wetlands right there. And so.
They said there's in. Well.
No, no, it's tied, no, it's tidal.
The co, the uh, DEP report said there's also inland wetlands on the site, is that possible? And they also called it Ash Creek, when I know it's South Pine Creek, I guess, but, uh, Pine Creek rather, but, and then I have a question, so you're basically demolishing the little tiny house, building a big half. Um, but you're getting rid of the garage, which is across Old Damn Road, and that's going to be buffered to what though, are there wetlands down there? I thought the wetlands were behind the house, not behind the garage.
No, so you see, see the gar, there's a, there's a, there's a blue line that points to remove garage, so the garage is closer to the tidal wetlands than the houses. So by removing the garage, we're actually increasing the buffer area around the tidal wetlands.
Tiny thing, and the, I'm sorry, the garage is the little thing to the left, okay.
Right there, well, that's where the garage was, and so that, that was removed, that increases the buffer.
Okay, and the buffer to the tidal wetlands is going to be wider, it's going to be seventy-five feet instead of forty-nine feet?
Right, yeah, because the garage is out of there now.
The garage again is the little tiny building, the bigger building is the house.
Bigger building is the house, but it's farther away.
And the, the house is the one more to the east, right? It's on the other side of Old Damn Road.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one other question.
Yep.
Um. DEP used to put this in all their recommendations for along this area actually, that. That if we do allow something to be built in this area. We should not in the future allow anyone to build like a revetment or a, or a, or a, or a seawall or anything like that to protect. Property once sea level rise starts inundating, because it will go up twenty inches, you know. And they used to say that in all their recommendations, it's not in this letter, but I would, I would suggest that we do the, put it as a condition of approval. That, um, because you want, for a few reasons, uh, but one is that you want the tidal wetlands to be able to migrate. Landward as they start drowning with sea level rise, and they can't have development near them. Now, you are adding to the buffer, so I appreciate that. So where the house is, which is again on the east side of Old Damn Road, that's going to be all native species or natural land. It's not going to be lawn or anything like that. It's going to be restored to natural condition.
It's gonna. We're not doing anything.
Yeah, I mean.
So you're demolishing the, the garage, or the house, or the.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. I mean, it's, we're not proposing any structure there, um. And there's no asphalt proposed there. So there's nothing proposed there. Um, I think, uh. Um, yeah, I, I.
Well, I would certainly add that as a condition of approval, that if you're demolishing the garage and that's expanding. The vegetative buffer, that should be a true buffer that the, that can be used, um, for, you know. Native plantings or, um, not to, not to, to be kept in a natural state. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to talk to our, our expert on that about what, what would be planted there that would be appropriate to be planted there and what. Um, but, uh. Being removed, uh, I mean, I, I don't, I, if we, we could look at the type, if there was some type of. Um, especially along the silt fence line, if there was something there that might be, uh, like a planting that would be beneficial, we could, we could certainly talk to them about that. Um, I just, I don't have them here with me as to a suggestion for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Any other questions?
Commissioner Randolph. Um, I was looking at the section drawings, so the numbers cut off, and it gets A two O. Uh, and the heights are not indicated on there. How does the height of the highest point compare to the other?
I'm not sure is the height of the, uh. Of the neighboring property. I know ours is compliant on total height, it's, um. Thirty-four feet, uh, to the midpoint, which is compliant with the flood zone. On the. Construction plans, it should say. Should be a measurement on the construction plans.
Oh, great, thanks. Yeah, I got, I've got the breakout here, so.
It's the new construction plans, I think, that were just submitted, or else. Uh, A three zero.
Twenty feet to the, to the, to basically the bottom.
I got it right here.
Okay.
So in the thirty-four feet, you're saying is compliant with the, with the regulations?
Correct, with, because of the difference in the average grade in the flood zone.
A three O, I don't see the roof deck indicated on this one though.
Well, it, because that's just showing you the ridge, the, the roof, that's just showing a section, uh, it, I think the rooftop deck. Because you can see the stairwell here, just be in line with that.
Yeah, I, I think there, there was a section in the downloaded documents, it's not in these printouts here, that showed them. But is the height of the roof deck consistent with the drawings that you showed for other properties? Well, it wasn't legible, there's a number.
It was twenty-eight feet, it looked on this, on what I see on this document, it's twenty-eight feet from. Um.
The bottom of the bridge line.
Bottom to the, to the, to where the rooftop deck is. And if you look at, I don't, again, I don't have the heights of all these buildings, but. Think what you could see here, this is the one across Old DM Road, first floor, living floors, then rooftop deck. These are the condos at College Place, one, two, three floors, then the rooftop deck, um.
No, I see, I see the drawings, I'm just wondering what the height, the elevations are, because I don't see that indicated anywhere. You're saying they're similar, but I don't see any measurements.
Any measurements? I, I mean, they're, I, I can tell you, I mean, and I, I've. They're, I mean, each one's that gotta be, I would say, at least eight feet, um, if not more, um. You know, this one, again, this one's three floors on top. I can tell you too that special permits have been approved. For rooftop decks throughout the Beach District. We found them at fifty-three Old Damn Road, one oh five French Street, eighty-six French Street, two thirty-four Pine Creek Ave. Um, so, they're certainly a common feature in the area.
What are the, another common feature, but what is the? The elevation above the ground height of the locations you cited, how does that compare to what you're showing me? Because you showed me a picture, but I don't know.
No, that's, I mean, that's fair, but I mean, if I look at this thing. Say ground at one, two, three, and then it's on the floor, so speaking, I'm counting these windows and I'm seeing four. And they've, I, let me put it this way, they've identified the addresses, we can look it up, I guess, now that it's in the record.
Is it, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to try to pull the plans on those. It's consistent with the neighborhood, just in regards with your special permit standards, I think, you know, these. Rooftop decks are now very common in the Beach District. Um, some of them might be slightly less in height, some of them, like this one. It looks like there might only be three floors, and then it's on top of that, and, but this one, there's, you know, almost like three full stories here, and then, so walk out here. Um, you can see it on this house over here as well. So, um, I certainly think it's consistent with what you find in the neighborhood.
Well, I know, I know, I know, you think it's consistent, but you're showing us pictures without any heights. And you're saying, trust me, it's the same. I, it would be helpful to make a informed decision on a rooftop deck if you actually had measured.
Well, I could, I could certainly pull their plans, because I know cer- a certain number of them, a number of them are, uh. Uh, you know, new construction, so, uh, I'm sure they're on file, and I could, I could pull them for comparables.
Well, I mean, if you wanted, if Commissioner Randolph's asking for maybe a chart, maybe we'll close the subject to that.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I, I don't want to, you're saying it's consistent, if you could demonstrate that it's consistent.
Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks, can I take a closer look at the college? I, I own, I own a rental house in college, and you don't see the decks, and they're almost like pits. But you're doing this for the marsh area, so the homes are all, our homes are on the other side.
Well, I mean, I mean, Fairfield Beach here.
So College Place where the other homes are across from the, I own there, and I don't see their deck at all. It's almost like a, it's like a pit. So it's really not what you're showing on yours.
Well, I think, again, what we're trying to do here is.
I mean, this example isn't really a comparable to what your deck.
Well, I'm just trying, again, what I'm trying to show there is height wise, I think that it is comparable, we can get the exact numbers on it, but then. I do think in our design, again, by where the house is located and then stepping it back here. We're trying to conceal this rooftop deck, uh, as much as possible. Um, and again, we had tried this with the enclosed stairwell, we would, in lieu of the enclosed stairwell, try to put a fence here. Um. Because, uh, to try to screen this neighbor's, the closest neighbor, we have a good distance then to our neighbor. The other thing I'll show you, I'll show you these other site pictures. First pictures here. See, this is, this is looking, I'm just showing just from the rooftop deck, the, the area where we've been looking at, the rooftop deck, which you can see this house. You pull into the garages here, and then there's their deck, and most of the balconies face out this way, looking west, so they're oriented away from us. So that's why we put the deck oriented towards that side. And then if you look across Pine Creek, we have this large. Structure that's on the other side of Pine Creek, and if you remember from the site plan, on the rear, there's no garage and there's nothing back there, so we. We think we've located in a way that it's best hidden, um, from the surrounding properties, um, in, in the way we've designed it.
Any other questions? Anything else? We go to public comment and you offer. At the very least, we'll, we'll see what happens with public comment first. Well, all right, you're all set though, Attorney Russo?
Yes, I'm all set.
Well, that'll end the public, excuse me, the initial presentation portion of this application. Are there any members of the public that are here, are in person, that wishes to be heard on this application, three, four, five, Old Damn Road? Come on up. Uh, walk up here, please. Um, any member of the public, we'll all start with people that are here in person, then see if there's anybody joining us remotely. If there's anybody joining us remotely or by phone, at least by a computer, if you can, in the chat, your name, so we know that you, you're up in the queue. Keep your, just say your name, your address, keep the comments remain to this application, and I'll figure out.
I'm Michael Shea, S H E A, uh, three twenty-three Old Damn Road. Uh, I live in the house that he said, the house across the street has a deck on it. That's our house. Um, so, um, I, I would, I, I would notice a couple things. A. That the deck is actually the fifth floor, it's not the fourth floor. Um, and, um, our deck, um, we didn't need approval for because it, you know, it, it was below, we're, we're. Um. If there's a, if there's a deck at the top. That fencing, whatever, you can't just leave a deck up there. Um, so you're not looking for a foot or whatever it is that you're looking for, it's, there's, then there's, you know, a fence on top of that. And from our standpoint, um, we end up losing frankly, a lot of the view of the sound. Um, and, you know, a lot of the value of our house comes from a very nice view that we get. From our deck and actually from our, our top floor room. So our top floor, the fourth floor, half of its deck, and then the other half of it is a master bedroom. Um, so for us, uh, you know, we think that it ends up really intruding on. Uh, you know, the pleasure we have from being able to sit up and live up there. So, um. That's, I think that's. More or less what we were, you know, here, we just wanted to kind of hear, uh, and hear what the, uh, I don't know, the rationale was. But yeah, we're, you know, we're right there. We're literally the corner of our property to the corner of that property is sixty feet. So we're, you know, we're close.
Okay. Just, uh, it's public time to talk to us about the application, so there's no dialogue amongst the public, um, and I'm not sure. What your relationship is in general, if it's the applicant or the public, but, any other, any further?
Uh, not today.
Anything else?
Oh, just that.
Hold up, it's okay.
Um, I think just to, just to go along with what, um.
Yeah, sorry, just to.
Name and address again.
Leah Shea, three twenty-three Old Damn Road.
Thank you.
Is that, um, we were able to remain compliant with the height requirements by having the deck be part of that top. Floor, which is, uh, rather than having a deck be an entire another floor. Um, if that is potentially something that can be looked at in the design. Uh, to remain compliant, as we did when we built our house a year and a half ago.
Thank you.
It's going to be a glass.
It's okay, let's, I don't need to go. That's okay, no need to go back and forth, that's okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to be heard? I assume you, you're with Attorney Russo, right? The applicants. That's, that's fine, I just want to make sure, um. Is there any member of the public that's joining us remotely that wishes to be heard in this application? Anybody sign up in chat?
Yeah.
Chat, yeah, that's right, word. Is there anybody joining us by, uh, remotely or by phone that wishes to be heard in this application? Joining by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Any other member of the public in person, remote or by phone, wish to be heard in this application? Attorney Russo, you have, you have the three, right? Attorney Russo, you have the three ladies?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so I'll close the public comment portion of this application, and you have rebuttal now.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, and I, and I think you've probably seen this in a lot of the designs of houses along, you know, in the Beach District, is. You can build, hence up being a more obtrusive roof, and build these decks into them to get around the height. You know, there's the, the height restrictions and the rooftop deck issue. What we've kind of done here is, the, the height of this building is, is completely compliant. Um, and, uh. Yeah, and, and we're asking for a rooftop deck that's also completely compliant as far as your standards, um, but. You know, and we looked at an option where. You end up building a higher roof, which, I'm trying to find, uh, where the example is. Where you build a higher roof, it ends up blocking more and, uh. And impeding people's views even further. What you, sorry? The one, well, you could see what people have done to try to get around some of the rooftop restrictions, and if you go throughout the Beach District, you'll find this, where. People have done these odd cutouts in. You know, so they don't affect the midpoint of the roof calculation, but they are able to put in a deck. And so you have this where the ridge of this continues, and then there's this facade in the front, so you, you know, when you're driving down Fairfield Beach Road, you're, what happened to this house? What's going on here? And that's how people, so, I, I, I think what we've done is something where, you know, here. The massing is hidden, you know, the, it, it, you don't have this, this massing here up here. You, 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 you have the house in the, the shape of the house, but then you have a rooftop deck on top, rather than something that, um, I think, you know. It works around the regulations to be able to provide a rooftop deck. Um, I'm happy if the commission is more comfortable, take a look and just give. Hard figures on those elevations and how high those rooftop decks are, to show that I think we are in conformity, um, but, um.
One of the comment, the comment made was. You know, if you put a fence up there, it's going to further obstruct.
Well, what I was talking, what I. What I was talking about was right here, not, the neighbor who spoke, I believe, is over here. And he's looking this way, and what, what I'm trying to say is, if, if we just made this a massive roof and built the. The, the deck into it, it would end up blocking his view more. So we've left it open, so there isn't anything here blocking. His look into this. What, what I was just saying is regarding the fence would be right along here, because there was a. In the plans that are submitted, there's a stairwell enclosure that provided some screening to this neighbor right here. Um, which our client talked to that neighbor and had, and, uh, she was in favor of having something there. So she didn't have to stare at, at the, you know, couldn't look at the deck or through the deck. So what I was saying is just here, not. Not all along here to block this person's view, but just here, you know, because they have windows here, they have a, uh, they have a balcony here, so somebody wasn't. Looking over their line or looking in their bathroom windows or anything like that, putting something there to screen it, but I wasn't saying all the way around. That's clear.
Mr. Russo, I'm. I'm accustomed to looking at architectural drawings, and you've got drawings that are all inconsistent here. You've sent, you've given us drawings that don't match what's submitted. You're saying you're not going to have the roof penthouse in, you're saying, trust me, this is his height, the height of other buildings. You're saying, trust me, it doesn't block the neighbor's view, you haven't done a site study, this is, there's not enough information here for us to draw any of those conclusions. I'm disappointed you haven't presented the information that, with details that you're saying exist. There's no height information here, you're saying it doesn't block the view, the drawings, you know, I'm looking at A two one. The drawings, you know, I'm looking at A two one, it's different than what you have here. There's no heights on anything here, so I mean, I, I, I can't.
And I understand that fully Commissioner, so, so.
Cause I know, I, you know, the, 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 the neighbors have a view. Are you blocking it or are you not? I, I can't, I don't know.
Well, it's height of consideration though, I mean, I thought, and I don't.
It is only a foot more.
That's not what we're here for.
Yep. We are.
The rooftop deck.
We are compliant, we're, right, it's just for, for coastal site plan and for, for the rooftop deck.
Rooftop, yeah. But they've got a penthouse, they've got a doghouse at the top, an enclosed area for the stair. I don't know what height that is, I don't know if it's compliant, the drawings are incomplete.
I, I. You just submitted something now to us that gave us the height of the building.
I think Jeff was looking at it. I think you were looking at it.
No, those are.
This is not the first one that you were looking at.
Consistent with, with the.
That's what was submitted to CAM.
Okay, so I mean.
This is the updated construction.
There's no roof deck on the, on the ones that's Davis.
I mean.
Those are construction.
And it's, I mean, to be honest with, I mean, too, I mean, they've given us. Well, that's fine, but they've given us addresses. I mean, I, you, you're right, I don't know what the heights are, I can count windows and see how high it goes as far as that. But who knows if things are grandfathered in either, so I mean, you know, you get. Height's not really a consideration, it seems like here. It's a special permanent, it's a camp.
Yeah, but, but. This exists or does it not? You know, I mean, everything's inconsistent here, so.
I'm, I mean, I'm not sure if I agree with that though, I mean. So what, what do you?
This is the roof deck, this doesn't have a roof deck on it.
Well, because it's looking at, it's looking at a section, there's still roof.
So the, the plans that we got early on that we submitted for coastal site plan review. They do show a stairwell enclosure, which we asked them.
Right.
That cannot.
That's an existing condition.
No, it's a.
Yes.
So the roof deck is this gray piece from the top there?
Yeah, isn't that what?
No, no, that's the roof there.
Attorney Russo, come here please.
Put the roof there.
Sorry. What's this?
That is. That'll help you.
No roof deck. Roof deck's here. Break these.
That's the, no, that's the. This is the, the rear.
What about here? And then they've got this piece with the.
Somebody had one, white one.
I had it and I handed it.
Oh, all right, something of the.
Chair, I, I'm happy to submit revised plans with all the correct figures so that the commission's comfortable that they're working with. Consistent plans, I don't want to take up any more of your time because I know you have, you have a busy schedule. Happy to keep it open to, to.
We're going to keep the hearing open, subject to diff, additional submissions.
And we'll keep it really limited next time, just.
I'm also going to reopen the public comment.
Oh, absolutely, I understand that, hundred percent.
So you'll submit them, I don't know. Um, when can you submit them?
I'm sure we'll probably get it tomorrow.
You'll get it, you'll get it to us by the end, when, I don't even know when we'll put this back on. Uh, when will this go back on?
We would have to, we normally release this agenda on Thursday. For next.
Get this on for next week, or is that too, asking too much?
So pick two disinformation.
We can.
Um, all right, then let's get it. Get this in by. Thursday.
We'll get it, we'll get it in tomorrow, see if you have it for the next.
No, it's fine, if you want to say tomorrow, I'll say tomorrow, get it in by tomorrow. Um, so it will be posted by tomorrow or Thursday, Thursday noon. This will be continued till next Tuesday, give the public time to see it again. And we'll re, we'll have, we'll just kind of start over, so to speak, and you'll reopen public comments. Okay?
How do you do that? Thank you, I appreciate it, appreciate the feedback. We'll get those to you.
Um. While during this matter, it remains open officially. All right, recalling. Twenty-one seventy-nine, twenty-one ninety-nine Post Road, twenty-nine Fairfield Place. So, just on the record. I had thankfully, I did that and. Mr. Harrison, if you don't mind me using you as well. I've said, right, it was, it was Matt. And we can pull it up and we can queue it up is that we had left this open, subject to the receipt of expert reports. And that was my understanding.
Can I make a, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, not yet, please. So, um, we can queue it up and we can all listen to it together. Um, so I was trying to be as clear as I can, I want to be as fair as I can. That's what I thought we had all, that what I had outlined and what we all agreed to. So if that's not, if there's a disagreement on that, I'd like to play the rec, play it. If I'm wrong, I want to be corrected.
I have a comment that directly relates to what you're saying, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Braun.
Reading through the Q and A from Mr. Trinkus and then the response by the applicants.
Commissioner Braun, you're not talking about what I'm saying, because what I'm saying is what I said last time.
Can I finish my comment?
Oh, because you said you were going to talk about directly what I was talking about. So I'll say again, does anybody want us to listen to what we, what was said last time?
Can I finish my comment?
You may not.
The, the only comment I would want to make.
Wow.
The only comment I would want to make.
Excuse me, we have received new test results on, that were done on May sixteenth, three days after our last hearing. I would like.
But we'll get to that point, but I, I'm addressing something specific, specifically what I said last time.
Can have been on this testimony.
We're not getting to that point yet. We're not there yet. I'm asking, and I'll play it on.
Just make a comment.
What I said last time, what I said, I believe, I'll play it if I'm wrong. Did we, did I say was subject to receipt of records, not that your experts would present? Because if that's what I said and we all agreed to, then I want that known now.
Just for perspective and, and, and for the record, my only comment will be, and if the, if the, if, if the public and Mr. Green want to hear what was said. I think that, that, you know, the seminal issue here is due process. The seminal case or one of them is to protect Hampton North Haven from excessive traffic and pollution, Inc. Versus the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Hampton. I think the analysis here, the legal analysis is whether or not the opponents are given a full opportunity to offer testimony and documentation in opposition to the application. That's the due process standard. In that context, all I would point out would be the following. This matter was published on May twenty-fifth.
Oh, I just, because I'm going to cut you off like I cut off Commissioner Braun.
Sorry.
Because I just.
I, I, I think.
I wanted to be clear as to what was said before. Okay, so, do you have it queued up? Does anybody have it queued up?
I, I am.
Okay, let's let Commissioner Harris, uh, uh, sorry, Ms. Harrigan's do it, because I just. I want to be clear as to what was done, what was said, and what we agreed to.
Look, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, obviously, we're going to honor the ruling of the chair. So why don't you, I would ask that you just make the ruling, we don't need to go.
No, I want everybody in the room to hear what it said, because.
And all listen to it.
Everybody in the room thought that we were going to be able to present expert testimony today. That's what everyone in the room thought.
Please.
Maybe you just weren't clear. I don't.
If I'm not, I'll let you go. I'm, I want to be as fair as I can.
Like full face shenanigans.
That's unfair, I'm not going to respond to that.
It's not a huge truth.
I don't, I don't know if this will play, I think you might have to do it Commissioner Chris. It's at timestamp.
Probably dial into the, uh, the meeting and then broadcast it up there.
It's at timestamp three thirty-seven forty.
It's next Thursday. Why would that need to be done?
Twenty-four hours in advance on Wednesday.
Twenty-four hours, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. It was more of a stash toward thing, it's different, but that's fine. All right. I'm closing the public, uh, comments, subject to the receipt of the two email, uh, from the experts. Hopefully Wednesday after, uh, Wednesday by close of business, excuse me, Thursday, close of business. That's fine. I mean.
I don't, look, there were other comments made, this was, it was a long exchange for like ten or fifteen minutes there. For ten minutes, there was an exchange on how we were going to proceed. So I would just ask for ruling by the.
Listen, I, I don't, no, hold on, pause it, please, pause it. I mean, listen, I'm trying to get this done as expeditiously and as fairly as possible. Now I've got neighbors upset with me because I'm potentially excluding expert testimony. And I think that's very unfair based on the higher. So, now I'm put in a position of due process here. And I agree with what I did previously, that if I gave you the submission, that that would be sufficient enough. Um, we have, our normal thing is we have rebuttal, we close hearings, and then we have a vote on the next time. Now we were forced to potentially finish the hearing today and vote today. And with all the time constraints, I felt it exceptionally prudent that we get all the receipt and doc, documents done beforehand. And we've done that, and.
I have, I have two points.
Sure.
One, I'm going to object, but the commission is going to rule how the commission rules. I would suggest that Mr., well, if you have questions.
I'm fair.
Are available.
That would be my suggestion is.
That's item one, notwithstanding my objection.
Why?
And two, uh, I, the other thing I want to address is the material submitted by the applicant.
We don't get two rebuttals, I mean, we don't get two public comments.
I'm not going to comment on the substance of it. I'm going to comment on the fact that public hearing, the public hearing was closed, apparently, based on the comments I'm hearing. First of all, what is the ruling on whether we're going to be able to present our experts?
I'll let, I'll let the commission ask questions, but I don't feel the need to go back on what I said was that public comment was closed, subject to the receipt.
All right, all right, so public hearing was closed, and I under, I, look.
Public comment was closed.
Note my objection for the record, please. Next, uh, after the close of, uh. After the, apparently after the close of public comment, and despite the fact that much of what Mr. Trinkus has in his report was first highlighted by Devon Santa, uh, six months ago.
It's part of this record.
And it's part of this record now too, because you incorporated the record of the previous application involving this matter that's presently on appeal. These issues were raised after public comment was apparently closed. The town engineer somehow, uh. In coordination with the applicant. Suddenly got involved in doing test holes and test borings that addressed the comments by Mr. Santa from six months ago. And in fact, in Mr. Trinkus's report from Friday, uh, this past Friday, the sixteenth, and I believe on Sunday. Uh, I'm going to say Sunday, the date is, is an error, or. And then this new material that answers some of the comments on missing information. So by way of rebuttal, it was our position that the application was incomplete, that the engineering, site engineering and stormwater engineering. Was inadequate for this commission to make a finding. Public comment closes, and then the applicant, well played by Mr. Andre and Mr. Lakey.
That's not, that's not fair.
It is fair.
That's not fair.
It is fair.
I would.
No one said, no one said on Tuesday night that we're doing test borings after public comment is closed. Now this report has been received by the commission with new evidence after public hearing is closed.
The, so I may respond, this, so the record is clear because that's not a reasonable or accurate statement of what occurred. What occurred was that there were questions raised along the line of the sufficiency of the test borings. And it was directed by the commission to Ms. Harrigan that you should consult with the town engineer. You remember that, that they, that the, 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 the town engineer should be, uh, weigh in on these issues. And as you know, the town engineer always has the right to weigh in at any time in the proceedings, even if the hearing is closed. Acting expeditiously, Mr. Hur Early reached out and wanted to do the test boring, the test hole work in advance of this hearing tonight, and he did that. And then he supplied you with an email this morning, or to Ms. Harrigan, uh, to you, that basically confirmed that. So this does not come to some serendipitous, uh, you know, action by my client. This was a direct request by the commission to Ms. Harrigan to reach out to the town engineer to get his position on these issues. When he was surprised that, he said, let's do these test borings, and that's, that's what, that's what was done. So it, it, it's, it's not anything that we are instigated, it was what you asked the town engineer to do.
What's the ultimate, I mean, what's your, Attorney Green, fine with the recitation, but what is the end game, so to speak, with that respect? I mean, what?
There's new evidence in the record.
Strikes me as rebuttal evidence, and it was directed by.
When we say, when we say there are inconsistencies in the engineering, stormwater engineering for this project. And public hearing is closed.
Comment is closed.
Public comment is closed, thank you. Then it is up to the applicant on rebuttal to say, no, here it is in the report, your expert is wrong, but really what's happened here.
That's, that's, we'll let the, the commission will decide that.
And I guess, this is, Mr. Chairman, this is critical to his point. That, that protect Hampton case, okay? In such an administrative per, hearing, it is standard practice that the applicant be given a right to offer evidence in rebuttal to the opponent's claim as part of final summing up of the applicant's position. See Connecticut Land Use and Practice, Section ten ten, page six sixty-eight. It is also well settled that after an applicant makes such a rebuttal.
Mr. Paul, can you just slow down, please? I'm trying to take this all in, you're talking a bit fast.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner, yes. It is also well settled that after applicant, the applicant takes such a, makes such a rebuttal regarding the opponent's claims. The agency is not required to give opponents a surrebuttal. The commission properly followed this procedure in concluding the hearing, et cetera, et cetera. So we, we submitted rebuttal information that addressed directly the concerns raised by the opponents with regard to the test borings. They were confirmed by the town engineer, but they're totally part of our rebuttal as submitted in writing. And they're proper, and they don't violate any due process.
Again, I'm, I'm inclined to let the, the commission ask questions of the Greens' experts, uh, of, um, Attorney Fallon's experts if they're here.
Yeah.
All right, so I mean, that's the way forward. Commissioner Braun, I interrupted you earlier, what else did you have?
Exactly, what was just said, which is new, not just finding data in the record to challenge on rebuttal, but performing new tests without allowing the other expert to even evaluate them or assess them. And I know we're under time constraint, but if the experts here, they can at least say something, even though obviously they don't have time to review the whole thing. But I don't think it's appropriate to conduct new tests on rebuttal when the public has no chance to, to look at it or assess it or evaluate it. We didn't get those to like a day or two ago, or maybe today. I mean, that's.
Well, it, again, it doesn't sound like it was anything, it was something that was, it sounds like it was something instigated by the town engineer.
Ethical request of the commission.
So I mean, is that, I mean, regardless.
Very technical material.
Yes, I mean, that's without a doubt, but again, I've set out what I think we need to go by. Asking questions of the experts, if you have any, not to have presentations, to follow what I, what I had said. You know, I don't want to play the whole ten minutes, but again, I'm, I was fairly confident, I was pretty clear about the receipt of it. And again, this is something, it's not like this is the second time around, so to speak, with this. It's a different application, different standards, there are a lot of similarities we have in front of us.
Mr. Trinkus is online, he is presently in Alaska. He has not had an opportunity, but as an accommodation, he is on the phone, he is here. He could not possibly review a report that we received yesterday afternoon while he's in Alaska. So we don't have the ability to respond to that.
I, I wouldn't expect.
That was the stipulation.
Hold on, hold on, I wouldn't expect you to be able to respond to their experts because they're in rebuttal. That's not how it works, it's a continual rebuttal. So they, I'm not expecting him to be able to respond to their experts, that's not how the process works. So this is what I would suggest, and, and I can, if, if, if the commission wants a few minutes to get their thoughts in order about that, then fine. Well, if we have questions on the experts, let's ask them now.
Can I just respond to Mr. Fallon's comments? Proceedings before this commission and all boards, bodies and commissions in Connecticut are governed by the rules of natural justice and fundamental fairness. Under, I have not read that case that Mr. Fallon is citing from in years. Having said that, I can guarantee you that allowing new evidence. Having said that, I can guarantee you that allowing new evidence after the close of public comment. Would lead to a system where an applicant could sandbag and not put evidence in. Have the public and their consultants identify defects in the plan. That the applicant has failed to meet its burden on its case in chief. And then on rebuttal, the applicant could bring its data and say, public, you don't have an opportunity to comment. Because.
That is not what happened here.
Well, first off, that's, that's not what happened here. What happened here was.
Hold on, let me.
The commission has.
Unusual, it's standard practice for this commission, after the close of a public hearing, to go to our agencies and ask. For them for to comment and to review.
And comment and review, yes.
I mean.
That's not what happened here. What happened here is this, these defects were raised six months ago. Six months ago.
They weren't peened. As a result of these claims of defect, this commission in their diligence asked the town engineer to opine. And the town engineer upon that request determined that it would be prudent to do new test borings. Which they, the town engineer supervised and reported back.
But any report or co- uh, comments from the town engineer, that's fire marshal, is new evidence.
That's not evidence, that's an opinion.
Well, it can come in after the hearing.
Yeah, it's expert opinion, opinion testimony.
It's evidence.
Yeah, okay, well, alright.
That's what he did. We did not initiate that, nor did we submit the evidence. The town attorney sent an, excuse me, the town engineer sent an email to Ms. Harrigan. Which has now been properly shared with you, responsive to the request that the town engineer look at these alleged. Uh, claims of defect.
And the town engineer found the reason.
And it's up for us to make a decision now. I mean, not now, well, yeah. By all accounts.
I ask a question.
Uh, yes, just out of curiosity, is it process or is it, are we talking about the experts?
I, I guess. In, in, look, I don't wanna overstep here. I, I really don't, um, we're under a lot of time constraints here. I got this information today very late and I didn't have time to digest or even read it, quite frankly, um, in, in time for this meeting, because I, I do work full time. I mean, do you think we should just not have this back and forth with the attorneys with all due respect and just hear from, from the experts for five minutes each perhaps? I just think it would be helpful.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Commissioner, but my, my sense of it is it's all in writing. It's, it's.
I, I understood and we had to make a decision like, like ASAP. And we were, and, and quite frankly, in my opinion, this was new evidence. This was, these were new test pits that were done. I, I don't know who directed them, but I, you know.
Well, Mister Hurley's email, I think speaks to that, but the, the fact of the matter is the reason that these documents were submitted in the timeframe they were. Is that although it had been noted for public hearing on May sixth and then again on May thirteen. The opponent's experts were not available and therefore as an accommodation. Taking consideration of the timeframe, the commission said, okay, you submit your reports by Friday. And that's what they did. And you submit your rebuttal reports by Monday, which we did. So there's, that's why we're where we are, but at the end of the day, everybody is having a fair. And complete opportunity through their experts to address their comments. And then the commission, you know, makes a decision. But that's, so that's, that's where we are. And, and, and the, the test borings were done by, at, at the direction of the, the town engineer.
We, I think we, I think we've said enough on this matter. I, listen, if the commission wants to hear brief testimony from each. Then fine, I'm, you know, I, I think that's not what we agreed to. It's not really what I want. Um, but if the commission wants it, I'm not gonna stand in.
If you're available for questions.
You're available for questions, I think would be if, if the commissioners have any specific questions with regard to their reports.
Not a matter, it's not a matter of the testimony.
I would have think so.
This discussion is on the report.
Well, well, every, okay, well, that's, just, just Commissioner Harrison just said, let's do a, a brief presentation by each. So that's why I went to that. I mean, on the report, you know, I'm reading the thing, rereading it. And it's reminding me that, again, this seems to be something that was done by the engineering department. And yes, it was brought up six months ago, but that's also when we had a separate application. Um, so I mean. It's not something that the applicant did, I don't think, by the engineering, by Mister Hurley's own email.
And he was doing it because he was asked to do it by the commission through, uh, the town planner who directed that.
And I know, yeah, and I'm not sure, I, no, we definitely were asking for his input.
Alright.
Yeah, unfortunately, we got it a, a little too late, in my opinion, for people to digest it, commissioners who need to make crucial decisions. We got it a little late, in my opinion.
But again, just so the record is clear.
Excuse me, we adjourned and have a second hearing later this week? That.
That doesn't, you can do it. My client's in Alaska.
Well, that doesn't, I don't care that Mister Trinkus is in Alaska. I don't know whether he's in Hawaii on the thirteenth, but if Mister Trinkus had been here on the sixth.
We don't need to go through that. I'm, I'm talking to my commissioners about, yes, this was obviously that we were gonna get things late. Well, not late, we're gonna get things like days before this hearing when we also, we either need to make a decision or have a second hearing later this week. So. I mean, tell me what everybody is thinking. Cause it's either we ask questions that we can, move the hearing and then vote later this week. Or we ask questions, we vote tonight.
If the commission, and I, I'm, I'm pigging backing on what Commissioner Harrison said. Look, this commission is so diligent and so fair. One other option, you, you have the ones that the chair mentioned. If the commission, because of the circumstances, we were all put in because of the unavailability of the opponent's experts. Wants to take the documents that were submitted Friday and Monday and review them more carefully. I'll be here Thursday night, I'll be here Wednesday night, I'll be here Friday night, I'll do whatever you wanna do. And I have no objection to that. And if this commission is more comfortable with that. Then you, you're working hard enough, then we should work hard.
That's why I put in the line item in the agenda that we may decide it tonight.
And, and, but one thing I wouldn't wanna hear is that. Mister Trinkus is in New Guinea. I don't care where Mister Trinkus is. He ain't here.
No, I think that, uh, my thought would be.
I, I don't think we need to, uh, uh, it's, you know, do this, talk about Mister Frank House. He could be wherever he needs to be, like, whatever. Let's just talk about what's, what's pertinent here.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, so the question is, this is up to the commission's decision about making the decision. I think the public hearing should be concluded tonight at the very least. Um, and if the public, if the commission needs time to digest it, then tell me what you're thinking about when, where, or if we need that.
Can the commission meet remotely, like on Thursday, middle of the day? Is that legally allowed?
We would need twenty-four hours to note, properly notice a special meeting.
Twenty-four hours, we could do that.
May I make a suggestion?
Hold on, one second, let's finish this thought. Well, actually, no, I think that's finished. Go ahead.
Mister, Mister. Maybe we can do the questions and then the commission can decide what the commission wants to do after.
Well, I mean, everybody's, I, I would like to do that, but I'm not sure. Everybody's telling me that they have, haven't had time, potential. Not everybody. Some are saying they may not have had time to absorb the information. Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, um, I mean, my concern is that, uh, I don't know where Mister Trinkus is, but these days with email. I don't know why he didn't get a copy of the response today. Cause I really was planning to just ask one question of the rebuttal experts was to what extent. You know, since we've had responses, rebuttal responses have been printed, to what extent they now feel. That there are concerns that haven't been addressed, that present issues of potential harm or threats to public safety. But if he hasn't reviewed the rebuttal, he's not in a position to address that.
I don't wanna keep going, but that's not how the process works.
And he's getting a sir rebuttal.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
Uh, he, he shouldn't be getting.
No, I agree with that. Let me, Commissioner ramp off, head of question, and then I will, let me go back.
I, I have a process question. So. The, um, information in question came from the town's engineer, correct?
Correct.
So the town's engineer is ultimately, correct me if I'm wrong, the ultimately the person who determines. Whether this stormwater system is safe and effective. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
I'm just wondering. You, you, the town doesn't issue the permit?
The experts, you hear from experts, you hear from the stormwater expert for the applicant. There's an expert for the, uh, town. If the town has a peer review or the town asks its engineer. That is all, the town engineer is a licensed professional engineer as well. Sometimes the public offers a licensed professional engineer. By law, this commission is the arbiter and decides what evidence it hears. Is credible and this commission is charged with making the findings of a special permit.
And you can find the town engineer's comments and findings to be credible.
Of course.
Sorry, you, you guys didn't answer, I'm sorry, I was really asking, um, um, uh, Ms. Harrigan the question. Ultimately, the safety and effectiveness of the stormwater system is determined by. The town of Fairfield's engineer, is that correct?
They sign off on the stormwater system prior to issuance of a building permit.
So, so this project, if the stormwater system is determined to be ineffective, incomplete. Or pose some danger, uh, there will not be a sign off on the, on the stormwater system. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm not sure what we're talking about here, because. This project is subject to the town's engineers review. And we can make it approved, conditioned upon the town's engineer approve, which is required. So I'm not sure what we're talking about. We're going around in circles on interpretations of, and I'm sorry, I'm just interpreting what I'm hearing. We're going around in circles on different conflicting interpretations on specific designs of a system that isn't even completely designed yet. Is that? Is that the issue that we're discussing? The incomplete design of a system?
Whether the system will work.
Asking, I'm asking the attorneys, please.
I, I, I think the system has been designed and your comment is correct that the, 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 the final approval.
No stormwater calculations in here.
Pardon?
No, the calculations aren't complete. The, the system isn't one hundred percent designed, it's schematically designed, correct?
Calculations.
Design is a one hundred percent complete? I'm sorry, I'm confused, because I didn't see complete stormwater calculations on a final design in here. Is that?
You go through the stormwater report, the original stormwater, uh, stormwater and calculations.
Right, but it's not the final, the, the design has not been finalized yet and the project, should it go forward, will be subject to. A final review. Is that correct?
It will be subject, I, I, the answer is yes, the, that, it will be subject to a final review by the town engineering department before the issuance of a building permit.
Right.
I make a clarification.
Just please.
I have a question, a comment.
If, if I could just make a quick clarification first, um, Emily and here again, again, for the record. So part of what happens with any normal project is sometimes they will do preliminary test pits. And then they will do more complete test pits prior to the issuance of a building. In this particular circumstance, because my understanding is. The soils report said it was a certain type of soils, yet their preliminary testing showed much better drainage. Than whatever. And I'm gonna probably botch this up a little bit. There's a state soils re- report for the area that suggests what the soils type is. When they did their preliminary test pits, it showed much better drainage than what that soils type would have predicted to be the case. Which is why, I believe, the stormwater system was designed for that better test in the field. Because of that irregularity, the engineering department said, well, we could know for sure. If we do the deeper test pit holes that are normally done before you issue a building permit. So that's a natural step in the engineering process that is normally not completed before review before this commission. It's normally handled prior to issuance of the permit for the building. Prior to construction with engineering review. If that helps clarify.
Yes, so I'm just saying that. Let's, the information we have provides. Direction. It is not the final design and so we as commissioners are to decide on whether this information is complete. To provide a direction and whether any deficiencies can be corrected. That is our obligation, correct?
I, I think Ms. Harrigan, yes, and I think Ms. Harrigan said it better than I could have or would have. I think that's where we find ourselves and I think that's the normal process.
We're, we're here to find fatal flaws, respectively.
That arrives to the level of, uh, a probability of, uh, public health and safety.
So Commissioner Braun.
Okay, so as a commissioner and as attorney, we need to be fully informed. We make the decision on whether we feel this will work. Or will, will create a threat of, you know, to public, uh, health or safety. We determine that, not the town engineer, not after the fact. We need to be fully informed. So we've been provided new test pits on rebuttal. Just completely improper because no one had a chance to look at it. I don't even. Her email, I don't know what it says, but I, I suggest. That we continue this hearing on Wednesday or Thursday, or Thursday, because I don't feel we have enough time to review this. And I would like to have Mister Trinkus look at this and give his, that's how public hearings, so we can hear from all sides and be fully informed. And not only hear from one side.
I, I.
Your suggestion is to keep the hearing open for the limited purpose of reviewing this. At this, uh, report from Mister, from our town engineer.
I, I just, I agree, can I just, one, one, sorry.
Commissioner Braun.
Pardon me?
So your suggestion to me is keep this hearing open for the sole and limited purpose of. A review from the, from Mister Trinkus, how the town engineer's most recent email and report.
Public fairness, for, for fundamental fairness to the public. No one has seen this, no one knew.
That, is that, we're agreeing with what I just said?
I'm saying, yes.
Okay.
So that's one suggestion. And the only thing I, I, I defer to the commission on that. I said before, I'd be here Wednesday, Thursday, whenever you want. The one thing that I would want respectfully, that I would disagree with Commissioner Braun is that. The comm- the, the, the hearing would be continued for the narrow purpose of response. By both consultants, our engineer and Mister Trinkus, to the email of Mister Hurley. I don't think that the law, as I referenced it before, about sir rebuttal. Entitles Mister Trinkus on behalf of the opponents to start to rebut our rebuttal. Because we shouldn't, we shouldn't look loose side where we, we were. They submitted their report, we submitted our rebuttal engineering report. He doesn't have a right to come back and clap on that. The, the, the Hurley memo, that's up to the commission.
That, that new test data was not known, so that had to be able to be.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I, I don't, I'm not sure I agree with you that that's improper evidence rebuttal, but I'll leave it to the commission. Cause we, do we want, I would close the hearing tonight. Subject to any questions anybody has of these, of these experts from what they've submitted so far. So we would do that. We would close the hearing subject to reports, written reports only, and I'll ask a question of you, Mr. Terry Green, in a second. Of the Hurley, the Hurley submission only. We would get them tomorrow. By five PM, I guess, and then we would have a hearing, I guess, Thursday evening. Or there, some point Thursday.
Need a written, just, this is, but do you need a written? I mean, I would just think if you're, if you want to keep the hearing open for possible testimony on the Hurley email. Um, you just set a date and we'd have our experts here and they could comment.
Telling me that attorney, Mister Trinkus may not be available, so that leads me to believe maybe a written report can be done.
It's here now.
That doesn't need each time.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't think he can do a review by Thursday, so.
So it's maybe move.
Well, that's half my, okay, that was more the practical Quinn's question anyways, is can he be, do a report and can he be here? If the answer's no, that's fine, just tell me. But that also kinda leads me with a, you know, what do you want me to do attitude with this Hurley report? Because I, I gotta have a decision in by Saturday. You want me to have a decision by Saturday or the thing's granted, approved, this whole application.
Mister Trinkus is online. I don't, maybe we can start by asking him the questions you have at the moment.
Well, I don't know if they have any questions.
Well, that's, I don't know the answer to that either.
Can you do us the opportunity to ask, John? I mean, come on.
Oh, I know, I didn't say, no, I, I didn't mean to say you can't, but if there are questions. On the Hurley, sure. I mean, look, I, the, the only thing I, I do, I wanna say again too, is that remember this is. that remember, this is material coming from your town engineer.
I get it, I get it, all right, all right, that's enough.
You can get that anytime.
Does anybody have questions for the, the experts? I mean, I've reviewed the materials as best I can, my capacity, and I did not.
For, for traffic as well?
Anything that's been submitted, written submissions, since last one. Any, I mean, Commissioner Randolph, go ahead.
Yeah, so, can I ask some questions on traffic?
I mean, I've got a call, I need a moment to call Mr. Braun.
Okay, okay. Mr. Sullivan is here, so.
Is Mr. Trinkas on the line?
Mr. Trinkas is on the line.
Okay, so I think Commissioner Braun and, I, I have some questions for him, but I'll.
You have questions for traffic?
For traffic and for, for Trinkas, just for.
Well, if you have questions, start, is, Mr. Trinkas, are you there?
Star six.
I don't know, if, if you're by phone, Mr. Trinkas, star six, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
I can, thank you.
Mr. Trinkas, um, I don't know if you've been listening to the back and forth, but we are non-tactical people on this commission. I'm a registered architect, but I will not pretend to be a civil engineer. Are there any defects in the design of the system that will, that will prevent the safe construction and configuration of this proposed project?
Yes, well, first, Steve Trinkas professional, Steve Trinkas professional engineer from Southbury representing the opponents, the answer is yes, and I, in, I have been following the discussion since 3:00 on your agenda. And in looking at, the only time I had to look at Mr., the email from Mr. Hurley was while the meeting was going on. The testing that they did, while they did deep test holes, then it appears they then put four-inch PVC pipes into the ground, backfilled them, and ran not what are known as borehole infiltration tests. What the applicant ran is a percolation test multiple times, which is not allowed by the 2024 DEP manual for infiltration practices. Infiltration tests must be either a double ring or a borehole infiltration test. A borehole infiltration test is one that is drilled into the ground, there is a PVC casing set into the hole, it's slotted at the bottom, and then the pipe itself is sealed, that is a borehole infiltration test. What the applicant did is just a deep percolation test. The rates they got, 90 inches per hour, equates to over 2,000 feet per day. And I will tell you, sand and gravel soils may be 300 feet per day, but they are not 2,000 feet per day of water moving through it. The problem with fast draining sand and gravel is there, is no attenuation of the pollutants because the water moves through the gravel so quickly, the pollutants move right with it. And what you will do is you will pollute the groundwater primarily with nutrients, both nitrogen and phosphorus, because they will not bind to sediment particles, they will just travel right through the water. Other aspects of the plan, and I cited this in my letter, so I'm not gonna go into it. The system itself is not designed in accordance with the requirements of the 24 manual to address water quality.
24, 2024 is not what Fairfield follows, is that what you're gonna say?
He's now sir rebutting, he's rebutting my rebuttal. You asked him questions about the, the Hurley email, now he's off to the races.
No, let him answer the question.
He was talking about his own, he was saying his own report.
No, he was not, he was.
I, I asked a question, he didn't, he didn't come close to answering it.
So, that's exactly right.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's our time, please. It's our time, Commissioner Randolph, ask the question again, please.
I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Trinkas, you didn't answer my question. My question.
I thought I did, okay, go ahead, ask your question again, sir, sorry.
We are not technical people, okay, I'm trained as a technical person, but explain in a non-technical manner, is the design of this system such that can be addressed, basically, changed, modified, or corrected in order to safeguard the community and protect the environmental conditions of the community? Or is it impossible?
It is my professional opinion, it cannot be modified as the site layout does not provide the adequate room to address the water quality issues.
But thank you, that was a clear answer.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Trinkas, when you mentioned that the testing was not done right, are you talking about the testing from the original testing? Or the testing that they just did like four days ago?
The recent testing.
Thank you, and also, they mentioned multiple times about, if 80% of the suspended solids are removed, then we don't have to worry about anything else, but does that address everything that you're talking about, like dissolved, solvents, phosphorus, and nitrogen? Or what, I, I don't understand what that means, when they say, when we do 80%, we don't.
I, I know Attorney Green submitted a stormwater quality manual, there is a line in the manual that basically says, if you provide the water quality volume, which is a volume of water based on 1.3 inches of rain, and you hold it in a practice that you will achieve the required pollutant load reductions, that statement is not supported by science. I am out at Water Resources Congress in, in Anchorage, and I've asked many researchers, academic researchers in water quality, and all of them have told me that statement is not true. It is true for sediment per se, but not necessarily the other pollutants. That's from academic researchers.
So you're saying dissolved toxins such as the ones you mentioned before, phosphorus and nitrogen, will not be adequately remediated, and they need something more, what do they need more to be adequate? Because this is very close to Long Island.
To remove phosphorus, typically a vegetated system will remove phosphorus. Nitrogen has to be removed in an anaerobic or wet environment. When it's in a unsaturated environment such as sand and gravel, it just simply moves through the sand and gravel. Nitrogen is only removed in a wet condition where it goes through denitrification, and the nitrate, which is the primary pollutant, becomes N2 and O2. So it turns into a gas, but it has to occur within a wet environment. In a dry environment, it's, there's no treatment of nitrogen at all.
And is this a dry environment?
This is a dry environment based on the applicant's data.
And then, the, the thing about inverts and elevations and pipes, that, is that, do they, is that being handled the right way, or is there, are these things gonna overflow those, those galleries?
You know, I listened to Emily's comment, I believe it's been the policy of Fairfield for, for a number of years that, you know, testing and tweaks to the plan get done after planning and zoning approves the project. I will tell you, having been licensed for 40-plus years and worked in many other towns in the state, we do complete designs with all the data right up front, which is reviewed by a planning and zoning commission. It is not left for the construction permit. Because you need to know that the system will work. And right now, there's not enough data to know that it will work.
Mr. Chairman, just if I can. No, no, it's our time to ask questions.
Thank you, that's all I have for now, thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Corcello.
I have a question for Ms. Harrigan, there's, we keep hearing references to the deep stormwater quality manual, and, and discussion of whether or not elements of the stormwater management plan meet those requirements, but then we hear other comments about the program, testing, et cetera, meeting the town's requirements. Can you just clarify what is actually required?
In Fairfield, I believe, as an example, the.
Mr. Trinkas, Mr. Trinkas, that was, sorry, but that was directed at Ms. Harrigan, not, not to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, no problem.
No worries, thank you.
So I will say anecdotally that the 2024 Stormwater Manual is recent, it's last year. And my understanding from conversations with our town engineer, Mr. Hurley, is that some of the testing that is required within that, a lot of towns have not converted to that level of testing due to the significantly higher expense, even for the town zone projects. So I think that there is a mixture across the state of folks who have been able to fully convert to the 2024 Stormwater Manual, and there are communities that are in process that have not quite adhered to all of the requirements because of the additional cost to towns. So that's, if I can anecdotally explain it that way, that's my understanding. Not necessarily that the prior manual was bad practice. This is better practice, but my understanding is it comes with a higher price tag.
I submitted chapter 10 of the Stormwater Manual into the record, and it also was in the record of the last one, and it does however speak to what is appropriate testing of, well, Mr. Trinkas can testify to this, but it, the, you'll see in chapter 10, you'll see in chapter 10 that it refers to the requirement that simple percolation testing is not adequate, that you do have to use an infiltration.
Let us ask the questions of the experts here.
Ms. Harrigan, can you just clarify, is it your understanding that this commission is required to find, determine whether something meets the 2024 manual? Or is this commission simply bound by what the town experts are willing to sign off on, or prepared to sign off on, or, the town standards, I guess? Is it the town standards, or are there standards that were required to meet that are beyond the town?
Well, I think that we don't presently reference the 2024 manual within our regulations, to be honest. But, again, I, I think that our town engineering department is satisfied with the methods that they are presently using. So that's what we rely on.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, from Mr. Trinkas, and thank you again for being here, sounds like you're traveling. Question number one, did anyone notify you of the new tests that were being conducted that were intended to answer your questions and Mr. Santa's questions?
No, I had no knowledge of the testing before it was done, only the acknowledgement after it was completed.
Okay, thank you. And did these new tests, did they provide adequate information to render a conclusion that the system will be working properly?
Based on the quick review of the test results and Mr. Hurley's email, the soil results, while it is extremely well-drained sand and gravel, does not provide the attenuation of the pollutants that will be generated by, you know, almost any type of development with impervious cover. One comment on the difference between the town and the Stormwater Manual, both, the Stormwater Manual is a guidance document, that's the language DEP uses. The engineer, all of us engineers are licensed in the state of Connecticut, our obligation under our license is public health, safety, welfare. So, we need, when we sign and seal a plan, we need to do whatever is necessary, whatever testing it is, whether it's a thousand dollars, whether it's $10,000, we need to do that testing in order to meet our standard under our license.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just offer to the commission too, I, I'm certainly not the most technical person, but I did have tried to read the 2024 Stormwater Quality Manual in my spare time, it, it's hard, but, you know, it's very interesting, so, you know, urge everyone to, to give it a read in their spare time, thank you.
We got the traffic guy?
I cannot get the traffic guy right now.
I don't know if there's any more questions for Mr. Trinkas, and if there is, that's fine, I just.
Sir Sullivan is here, if there is a traffic question.
I cannot get, fine, right now.
Your civil engineer here?
It's online.
Questions for the applicant's civil engineer, or can we finish up civil engineer?
I want him to respond to Mr. DeVanzo, are you?
Not without any questions.
Yeah, I'm so, my.
Question for him. Presentations. Trinkas, can you put yourself on mute, please? Thank you.
So, my, my question to the applicant's engineer is the same one as it is to the, the, the appellate. Is this system designed to meet the applicable regulations? And can it be designed, if, if, if it's, if there's shortcomings identified, that no shortcomings be corrected in order to meet the regulations?
Mr. DeVanzo, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did you, did you hear Commissioner Randolph's question?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay, could you respond, please?
Certainly, for the record, Wayne DeVanzo, a professional engineer licensed in Connecticut. Yes, the system is adequately designed, the soil testing that was recently done does meet the 2024 Stormwater manual requirement. What was done was a borehole infiltration test, it was a casing. It is, it was just as described in, in, in the manual, and as is done as, as common practice when, when that type of test is required. It was witnessed by the town. It now meets the 20, it, it meets the 2024 requirement for infiltration testing. The results were good or better than the previous test results from the, from the standard perk tests that were done. For that reason, there is no revised stormwater drainage report, because the, all of the, all of the, all of the data and all of the comments in it are still valid. The infiltration rate is still very conservative. We only used a design infiltration rate of 6 inches per hour, which is less than what was actually obtained in the field, it gives a much greater than 4 to 1, or 4, the factor safety of 4. Factor safety 2 is the standard. Again, this is the standard borehole infiltration test that is done on, on properties in towns, that town, that, in towns that do require it in Fairfield County. That was, so again, so again, we are satisfied that it is an adequately designed system, it is fully designed, it's not a schematic, it, it is fleshed out. We are providing the water quality volume, which is the required retention volume, and as per the manual, you know, Stormwater Manual says, when you do that, you are, you are meeting the requirement of removing all pollutants. You don't get to pick and choose what, what, what parts of the manual are valid and what aren't. And it is the standard practice that I have seen on other projects. Like, you know, where something is simply, water is collected and, and put into, to an underground retention system. There's nothing unusual about the system, there's nothing out of line about it. And it does, it does meet the standard, and again, towns have certain triggers for meeting a so-called standard one requirement, which often is proximity to tidal wetlands, or an area of disturbance perhaps. And it's, it's for that very, and, you know, when standard one applies, you are required to provide the full water quality volume, and it is for that very reason, to, to remove pollutants and, and to to make the runoff cleaner and to protect the environment, that, that's why for the more sensitive standard one projects, they have that requirement, and which, which mirrors what is in the 2024 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. So I think that's, you know, that pretty much sums up, you know, what we did, and.
Commissioner Randolph has another, another question.
So, that was clear, so, you, you're, you're the civil engineer for the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Yes, you're not a, a third-party witness, or, you know, you're not opining on this. So, we've got one engine, one registered civil engineer who's convincing, who says it's not, not compliant, you're saying it's compliant, but you're responsible for getting the permit, who actually makes the determination whether your stormwater design is, meets the standard and grants the permit, who, who makes that determination?
It would, it would be the town engineer.
And, and the town engineer is the one who reviewed the previous, who submitted the, that we're, the appellate says they had more time to review, is that correct?
Not the appellate, yeah.
You mean opponents.
The opponent?
The opponent, I'm sorry. The opponent, sorry. Is that?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase or could you repeat the question?
Mr. Hurley is the same one who prepared the report that's in question by the opponent's engineer, correct?
That's correct. Right.
Talking about the, the recent test boring.
Yes, yeah, the test boring that the opponent says is not credible.
That's right. Mr. Hurley prepared or provided the, the report that was received, I guess, today. I'm not sure.
Thank you. So the process is that Mr. Hurley will be determining the I'm just want to be clear.
You said, maybe you got, you said it, you said that already.
Okay, thanks. I'm done then. Thanks.
What question?
Commissioner Levy and then Braun.
You indicate that the system will the post system is terms of the total suspended solids will exceed the 80% standard. And that based upon that, that that will adequately address or take care of any phosphorus or nitrogen pollutants. Can you just explain the correlation between the total suspended solids? And the resultant impact that has on or relation it has to the removal of phosphorus and nitrogen?
Well, they're separate things. They don't really relate to each other.
But does the 80, when you say that it, when it exceeds 80% standard, that that's adequate as to all three, can you?
Yeah, they're different standards for all three. The 80% is for the total suspended solids and 40% and 50% for the others. But yes, it, it meets the standard for, for each of, for each of the pollutants. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun.
I'm looking at one of, one of the pages of, of your rebuttal report. It says number two on page, I don't know, it says, the question is why weren't double ring infiltration tests performed at the location of the bottom of each of the three galleries? Then you said the tests were performed in accordance with the town of Fairfield engineering requirements. What does that mean? Did they do the double ring infiltration tests or not?
No, a borehole infiltration test was done. There are five types of tests that are specifically mentioned in, in the 2024 Connecticut Stormwater Manual. So I was, I don't know why the question was specifically for the double ring, but you know, the, one of the other alternative types was done. I, I think that that answer might have been prior to this recent testing.
Anything else civil engineering related? The last one is traffic. Do you have Attorney Green, your guy available?
I don't. He is not available now.
Sorry.
He'll be available on Thursday if you're going to recon.
Well, we'll let the commission decide that.
I have Mr. Sullivan here, but again, my feeling is if you read Mr. Monalene's report, you read Mr. Sullivan's report, then you make your decision, but you've got the respective traffic people. But Mr. Sullivan is here.
Tell them, okay.
Commissioner Randolph, have any questions?
Let me ask you this, Attorney Green. I mean, I, I heard Mr. Trinkas kind of go through our town engineer's most recent report. I don't know, you tell me or Mr. Trinkas can tell me, is there anything further about that report? Or can that be put to bed? You know, as far as like any additional comments or reveal of that?
Mr. Trinkas is still here.
Yeah. You feel for, I mean, you're, Mr. Trinkas, are you there?
Mr. Trinkas?
Yes, I'm still here. Thank you.
So I heard you speak earlier about the report from the town engineer and the most recent testing. One of the things we were determining was whether we needed anything additional from either civil engineer on this most recent report and testing. Is there anything else that you need to, that you can tell us about it? Now, or you, you can ask him a question.
You just, I would suggest you ask each of the experts how nitrogen and phosphorus are removed from the system.
That's fine. We can ask that question now. Can you ask it again, please?
Mr. Trinkas, you spoke about nitrogen and phosphorus. As the system is composed, how is it removed?
In underground infiltration systems such as being proposed here, phosphorus and nitrogen both come in two forms. They come in particulate and they come in soluble form. In a system like this where there is no vegetation, the pollutants primarily are in a soluble form and they're therefore simply moved through the soil. They don't attach to anything otherwise. When there's high sediment, say from sanding operations and you know, phosphorus falls on the, the ground via what we call atmospheric deposition, that it will tend to bind to very fine sediment particles. And when the sand particles get trapped, the particulate phosphorus also gets trapped. But nitrogen is, moves freely, the, the primary form while the, is nitrate. It goes, you know, they look at just total nitrogen instead of looking at the three different forms of nitrogen. But nitrate is the primary concern and that is only attenuated in an anaerobic or wet system. Otherwise, it simply moves through the soil and ultimately will get into the groundwater. And possibly, you know, just again, move with the groundwater. But nutrients are best removed by vegetated practices.
If I may, when you say in soluble form, you mean they're fully dissolved in the stormwater itself, correct?
Yes, yes, they're, they're just dissolved. Think of coffee and milk.
All right, hold on, hold on.
A good analogy.
And just, and so is there any facility here that removes it in the soluble form?
Nothing that's proposed on this site plan removes nitrogen in the soluble form.
I think the chair asked if there was anything else you needed to address.
Well, before he goes to that. Before he does that, I want the response to that.
Devanzo, you, you heard Mr. Trinkas's comments. Could you please respond?
Yes. The nitrate and phosphorus will be removed through the soil, through, through the sand, even though it is, it's not silt, it is sand, it is a coarse particle. It will be removed by that. In the soil profile, there, there are finer particles lower in the profile that, that will, that will remove it. There, there was a, no restrictive layer found for quite, quite a deep depth, a depth in these soil tests. So it has ample opportunity to filter through and attach to the many particles many particles of soil that exist before it gets to any, any groundwater, which was not even found to depths of seven and eight feet and more. So for that reason, and, and again, this is the reason that the Stormwater Manual considers if, if you have the appropriate volume and you have the appropriate separation distance to groundwater, you are deemed to be removing the pollutant.
And, and following that up, in light of those comments and in your professional opinion as a registered and licensed engineer, is there any quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result to public health and safety with regard to the matter of the system? And, and this matter of the nitrates that we have been discussing?
Not that I know of.
Can I ask that of Trinkas?
Mr. Trinkas?
Yes, to answer that question, the inadequate treatment of nitrogen does cause an environmental impact within the groundwater. You are polluting the groundwater. And in this potential, in this neighborhood, I'm not aware if anybody has wells or if they're all on public water. But if you, if there is anybody with wells that is tapping into the shallow, you know, the sand and gravel for the well system, you may get increased nitrogen loads in the well water. It is, you're polluting the groundwater. That is a
Oh, sorry. I just
Pollution of the groundwater is a public health concern.
Just to put a point on it to mirror Mr. Fallon's question, in your professional opinion, is there going to be substantial harm to, by way of pollution of the groundwater resulting from this system?
Over the long term, the answer is yes, because the stuff doesn't go away. It doesn't happen tomorrow, but it is a long-term environmental impact and adverse impact.
Does it adhere to particles and sand and fine silk?
Phosphorus might, but nitrogen does not. Nitrogen just stays in solution.
Is that in the Stormwater Manual?
I doubt it, but that's what the research tells us.
No, it's fine. All right. But Mr. Trinkas, last, lastly, is there anything else that you haven't said tonight about the town engineer's report and the most recent testing that you want to tell us in any way? Because I just want to make sure we're completing that.
I, I only had, you know, time to look at the email from Mr. Hurley and a quick look at the actual soil test results. So I'd said, on that point, I'd said all I need to tonight.
That's fine. And I'm, I understand your limitations. It's shared by almost everybody, really. So I appreciate that. Anything, and your guy Sullivan, is it?
Mr. Sullivan is here if there's any questions related to his rebuttal report.
Anything? I think we're done with Mr. Trinkas, I think, unless there's anything else. Anything else for civil engineers? That I don't know if we need to keep it open now for you know, a final report on that, that, but we'll, hold on, let's your, your guy's not available, traffic. Anybody for traffic have questions?
There's nobody to ask questions to.
Well, Mr. Sullivan is here. I mean.
You have questions of Mr. Sullivan? Fine. If it's of Mr. Montleone, then.
Mr. Montleone's, some of his comments, I've just got questions about him, so.
Available on Thursday at five.
No, it's not. He's missed two meetings, so. I, I'm satisfied. I mean, I just.
Any questions? Commissioner Braun, do you have a question?
I, I don't need to ask that question. It's in the record.
Okay. Anything final or can I close this here, this hearing?
I have a less than five minute rebuttal. I never have given.
I know, you're right. And I haven't, you can have five minute rebuttal. Yeah.
I guess my only comment and I'm here representing Marie Mallow of 85 Littenburg Court and as supported by some of her neighbors, obviously, who you've heard of, but she is my named client. She is retained. But again, on this issue, you know, we can talk about it. And I'm sure it was an objective discussion, but once again, we do object to the receipt of this information. I appreciate the efforts of the commission to address it and I do.
No, I appreciate it. I mean. Then it was solicited by us. It was again, reaching out to our engineer in the normal course. The engineer is the one who asked for this stuff. So it's, and then for us, so.
I just think, I think there are bounds and I know that there are members, people in the neighborhood who concluded that public curing was the public comment section was closed and certainly who knows who out there didn't get a chance to see this document or see this new evidence. Just stating that for the record.
It's fine. I mean.
Here we are.
Whatever, I mean, whatever happens, happens. Trying to be as fair as I can and maybe as well.
And I appreciate your efforts. My objections lodged.
I mean, people will disagree. Hopefully everybody understands it's reasonable, but that's not for me to say.
Thank you.
All right. Attorney Fallon, five minutes, please.
Five minutes.
Attorney Lee Commission about what to do next.
Yeah, I mean. This, this case revolves around quantifiable probability, evidence, speculation, et cetera. So I'm going to just finish up tonight. First of all, I'm going to thank you, as I have before, for your diligence over the course of these many months and with respect to this application. But let's finish up, at least from my perspective, and talk about what we know in this sea of record. Okay? We know that there continues to be a need for affordable housing in Fairfield, and that is especially true in this area town. We know that there is a state statute which, whatever your personal preference about it may be, it does remain the law in our state. And we are duly bound and you have and shown your ability to follow it and uphold it. We know that that law, as interpreted by our state Supreme Court, provides that denial of such an application must be supported by record evidence establishing that there is more than a mere theoretical possibility of a specific harm. And that the record must contain evidence that there is a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted. We know that we all prefer the mixed use development that we originally applied for and that you were good enough to approve. We know that in light of the appeal that has been filed with regard to that matter, the property owner must, as a matter of prudence, proceed with this application. We know that this application, based upon the evidence of record, complies with the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes 8-3 and the case law I mentioned. We know that this proposal does in fact constitute a worthy development alternative that would provide the town 18 units of much-needed affordable housing at a convenient and accessible location in our downtown. We know that from a traffic perspective, this development will have less impact than the mixed use proposal that has already been approved. That is non-uncontroversial. We know that all questions and comments with regard to stormwater design have been previously addressed and concerns refuted as part of both the mixed use record, which is part of this record, and these proceedings. We know that your engineering department diligently reviewed all aspects of the design and confirmed the approval. And we've discussed a lot tonight about that and Mr. Hurley's email and the test borings that he supervised as a result of the questions that were raised. We know that the WPCA has approved the sewer connection for this proposal. And we know that the record contains no adverse comments from the police or fire department with regard to any matter concerning public safety. Thus, we know that the record contains no evidence, no evidence of a quantifiable probability this specific harm will result from the approval of this application. And therefore, we know that this application, as a matter of law, should and must be approved. And we know you've worked very hard on this. And we appreciate your time and patience and understanding, and we hope you'll approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the hearing on this matter. Go now to the executive session portion. We can discuss what to do, vote tonight, adjourn, or whatever. But I'll call 21, in our executive session, 2179, 2199 Post Road in Fairfield Place. I'll not go through the weeds. Upon completion of the public hearing of the zoning compliance and coastal site plan application Sunshine Development into a 60-unit residential development pursuant to Section 830D of the Connecticut Statute Commission may vote on this item prior to its statutory deadline of May 24th, design commercial district. The commission, I'll see you next. I call this item for a motion.
Commissioner Porcello?
I would move to approve with the following conditions. That the applicant add inverse to the proposed trench drains the satisfaction of the engineering department. That the applicant added trench drain at the terminus of the drainage pipe toward Fairfield Place, that the applicant designed pipe, and I can, you know, these later. That the applicant designed pipe routing and shallow drain connections within the roof, deck, ceiling structure to the satisfaction of the engineering department. That the applicant maintained adequate sedimentation and erosion controls during construction per DEP recommendation. That the applicant had a clay barrier along the property line to the south to contain infiltrated water per town engineering department recommendations. And that the applicant requests that the local traffic authority create and enforce a 15-foot no parking zone around the exit driveway.
Is there a second?
May I speak?
Let me get, see if there's a second first. All right. I don't care who wants it.
Go ahead.
Commissioner first. Commissioner Levy, seconds. And I realize in, as you were doing it, you had staff comments that we did not go through. I don't know if anybody wants to go through the staff comments.
I'm having a hold. You asked for a motion, so I did, but.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I realize I went, I do that, I went out of that. So I'll let Commissioner Harrison, what, you had something?
Yeah, I, I would like another day or two to consider this. I, I would appreciate the deference from my fellow commissioners who I know we, we serve weekly together for many months. Look, we don't want to haste anything. I would just like another day or two to digest some of the the documents that we've received in the last few days. I don't see any that we have to pass it tonight. We have a few more days, so I would like to continue this until Thursday. And I would um, respectfully ask that of my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I guess the question is, will we have a quorum available on Thursday? So I think it's probably a, a poll of your commissioners.
And I don't, Emily, I don't think everybody's here either. So I think we, we don't think we can just do that tonight, right?
We have seven. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understood what you said, Mr. Uh,
Well, I, I don't, I think Commissioner Ford wasn't here tonight and Commissioner Seaver, I don't know if is there in person.
No, but we have seven.
We have to be
Okay.
May I?
I mean, we're going a lot of turn because it's normally commissioner movement in the second, but I'll, but go ahead, Commissioner Braun.
Um, I have suggested the same thing earlier this evening. We've received new test data results and now we've heard from two experts on stormwater. We've also received um, new reports from both traffic engineers. And uh, but especially the stormwater, because it's very complicated and technical. I'm gonna actually re-listen to what they both said tonight. I, I can't make a decision tonight. I don't think I can make a, a well-founded decision after getting all this new information basically today. I would like to find a way to do this remote, perhaps on Thursday, just executive session on this.
Well, the public hearing, so if we do it remotely, it's still gonna be public, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would just state for the record, I'm not gonna be able to vote tonight. I don't have enough information in my head to, to render a good decision, so I will not be voting tonight.
I mean, listen, that was one of our options was, as I said the last time, we're gonna be getting rec, reports and we can either decide to vote tonight or not. But I mean, I think I've given fair warning that there may be a potential vote tonight, but the commission doesn't have to go down that route. You've got two people asking for that. I
I did that's, that, that added a whole nother dimension to it.
Not what?
The new tests added a whole new dimension to it. That's new evidence. I did not anticipate that.
That's fine. I mean, I'm not sure I agree with it, but that's fine. I understand your point. I, it's up to the commission. I don't, I mean, I'm maybe prepared to vote tonight. If people want to defer to Thursday, we can, let me ask you this. Is anybody avail, is anybody available Thursday?
I'm available.
Well, that's kind of what I'm gonna be discussing. Let's
I'm available Thursday.
I know you are.
I'm available.
I, I can be available.
What time?
What, I mean, evening or are we talking during the day?
As long as it isn't early in the morning.
I mean, our second, anytime we've done a second hearing during a week, we've always done it during lunchtime. So I don't, but I don't want to restrict this to an hour, but maybe an hour is sufficient. Um,
Lunchtime would be preferred for me.
I would think an hour is sufficient. We've, we've
I would think so too, but I didn't want to presume anything. Uh, I don't want to limit anybody unfairly, so.
I can do two, at least two hours on um, lunchtime on Thursday. That's me, though.
All right, Thursday. Well, I mean, I'm presuming that we're doing this Thursday, but I, it seems like there's a potential for Thursday. Can you?
Yeah, if we, if we're targeting around that much.
All right. I mean, I, I don't think it's fair to, well, no, no, I, I retract that. Uh, I was gonna say anything about the evening. I prefer not the evening. You put it that way. All right. What do you, the, the motions, um, Porcello and Levy, what are your thoughts? I'm okay.
I mean, I'm clearly prepared to
I'm
But if, if the uh, the, uh, everyone wants to uh, do it Thursday and everyone can do it Thursday, then I mean, I'm prepared to vote, but in deference to fellow commissioners, I I think it appropriates As long as everyone's aligned on, you know, targeting the middle of the day and this not being an evening.
Thursday at noon. Noon to one would be the ideal time. I mean, I, I, there's gonna be no limit. I mean, I guess it's the only limit is how long we stay on. But the ideal would be Thursday, noon to one. Uh, we have to stay late. We have to, because let me put it this way. We will, if we don't vote on Thursday, we will not be able to notice a meeting on Friday. So that is our one chance to the vote on that point.
And then it passes, it's approved.
Then it's approved statutorily.
I understand that and I will be able to meet as soon as we need to.
Okay.
We need to retract and
Yeah, I can
Uh, I'll retract, speak up to, I'll re, I'll retract the previous motion and move to uh, table. Uh, vote to Thursday.
Remotely.
Remotely at noon.
At noon.
And thank you to my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Porcello.
Thank you.
Anything on your end, Ms. Hergren, that I'm missing?
I think we covered it. Oh, but do we have to vote on the table?
Yeah, okay. Um, anything further or can we vote?
Clicking the table.
Yes, I assume you're stuck. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. It's table to Thursday at twelve remotely. Still being the last item, um, I'll adjourn the meeting. Everyone.